Thank you. Good evening, councilors. I'd like to welcome everyone to our May 23, 2023 Council, City Council Meeting for the City of Gloucester. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council in according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It's a finding in the City of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to introduce first the councilors that are here tonight. If you would just raise your hand. First of all, Councillor at Large, Councillor Jason Grow. Councillor Sean Nolan, who's our Ward Five City Councillor and also the Vice President of the Council. Councillor Scott Memmard, who is Ward One City Councillor.
Can't get there from here.
Councillor Tony Gross, who is an at-large City Councillor. Councillor Jeff Worley, who is an at-large City Councillor. Councillor Jamie O'Hara, who is at-large City Councillor. And I think we're missing Frank Margiotta, who is Award Three City Councillor as well. Oh, Frank, where are you?
I'm on my screen. I'm on the top left.
Oh, okay. So, so, welcome. And I don't see, is Tracy O'Neil here?
I'm here.
Okay. Okay, I've got to shrink this all so I can see everybody. All right. And I'd like to also like to mention, welcome members of city staff. First of all, Joanne Sinos, who is our City Clerk. Joanne, thank you for being here tonight as always. And let me see who else is here. We have Jill Cahill, who is our CAO. And we have Diane Katz, who is in our Treasury Office.
Auditor's Office.
Oh, I'm sorry, auditors. I'm sorry, Diane.
Assistant Auditor.
Okay, thank you. And we also have a guest tonight, Adrian Nunez, who is representing MMA and we'll be hearing from her shortly. Is there anyone else on the call that I need to introduce?
Mike Hale.
Oh, Mike. Mike Hale is our Public Works Director. Thank you, Mike, for being here. I know it's a real busy time for you, so we appreciate it. So that's who's here. And I'd like to begin by just noting that in order to accommodate our guest speaker's schedule tonight, I'm rearranging the agenda to allow her to present first on the agenda. And in doing so, I would like to ask the City Clerk to call the First Order of Business. Madam Clerk.
First Order of Business is the presentation from MMA rep Adrian Nunez, Legislative Analyst, Public Works, Transportation and Public Utilities, regarding Chapter 90, Public Road Funding Formula.
Okay, great. And just a minute, I'm going to ask Mike Hale to introduce Adrian. But I just wanted to mention to those who might be on the call waiting to participate in our oral communications for matters not on the agenda. We'll be doing that right after this presentation. So I'd like to ask that, and Eric Smith has joined the call. He is our Fire Chief. Thanks, Eric, for being here. So I will turn. I will ask Mike, what's happening now? Some, can everyone mute themselves? Because I'm getting an echo from someone that's not muted. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to ask our Public Works Director, Mike Hale, if you would introduce our guest tonight. And then councilors will have an opportunity to hear from Adrian and ask questions of both Adrian and Mike Hale. So you have the floor, Mike Hale. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, City Councilors, Mike Hale, Public Works Director. I'm very fortunate to sit on the Massachusetts Highway Association Board with Adrian Nunez. She is the MMA rep to the Executive Director Board for Mass Highway Association. I am the representative to Essex County, the entire Essex County to Mass Highway Association. We're a hundred-plus-year-old organization. We meet monthly and you realize that all 351 communities in the Commonwealth have very similar issues. They just have different zip codes. So I'm just, I'm going to introduce Adrian right now. She can give a little more bio of herself. And I'll stay on and we can yin and yang as the night goes on as you see fit, Councilor. Thank you.
Thank you so, so much. Adrian, welcome to our City Council Meeting. It's a pleasure that you're here and we're looking forward to hearing from you. So if you'd introduce yourself and then get into the nuts and bolts of what we've asked you to present to us tonight, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Councillor Gilman, and thank you to the City Council for the invitation to come and talk with you today. It is a real pleasure to introduce myself to you. I know I've had the pleasure of meeting a couple of you over my time at the MMA, but I have a if you see me is to stop me and say hello. I'm going to go ahead and start sharing my screen. I do have some slides for you all to share with you yesterday.
Adrian, I'm having a little bit of an echo when you're talking, so I don't know if why, but I will give you a heads up if it's to the point we can't hear you. Maybe you can go to a different spot in your location.
Okay, all right. Well, I will go forward and let's see, maybe I will. Yeah, let me know if it's a problem.
Okay, we can hear you now beautifully, so.
Perfect. Thank you, councillor. All right. So folks, as I mentioned, and as folks have introduced me, I'm Adrian Nunez. I'm a legislative analyst at the MMA. That's the Massachusetts Municipal Association. Probably most of you are familiar with the Massachusetts Municipal Association, but just in case there are some folks on the call that are not. We represent the interests of all 351 cities and towns across the Commonwealth. And I am part of a six-member team that advocates for cities and towns at the state and federal level. And I specifically work on transportation, public works, and utilities policy. Okay, so jumping right in, if you don't already follow us on social media and haven't signed up for our newsletters, please do. These links are here for you. Today's agenda, I was invited today to give you all a bit of an overview of the Chapter 90 program. Talk a little bit about funding history for the program and the need at the municipal level. And talk a little bit about advocacy and legislative action in this session. There's a lot to cover. I'm going to talk really fast. I'm happy to take calls with you all outside of the meeting. Obviously, take questions today if there's time. Please just remember I'm here as a resource for you. The entire MMA team is. I will just jump right in. So the Chapter 90 program, what exactly is the program? It's an annual formula funding program for municipalities for capital improvements on local public ways that's authorized through Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 34. And that's why it's over time come to be known as the Chapter 90 program. Now, what does all this mean? This means it's annual funding through a bond bill provided by the state to municipalities to take care of municipal roads and bridges. Across the Commonwealth, cities and towns are responsible for about 30,000 miles of roads and bridges, which is about 90% of all of the road miles statewide. So this funding is an essential program for communities to help to maintain roads and bridges in a state of good repair. It's important to note that the funding for this program is authorized annually. And it's not available to communities until it's approved by the legislature and the governor. It's administered by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. But the overall rules for the program are actually set in the law itself and Mast dot really just administers it. It's also important to note that this is a reimbursement program. So isn't, it isn't just an injection of funding into municipal accounts. There is actually a fairly extensive process for applying for the reimbursement for the funding. First off, the, whatever project you're working on must be an eligible expense. And there's a few different categories for that. But we have to go throughout the municipal level, generally GPW directors or GPW departments and other liaisons will work with Mass DOT regional representatives to first apply for project approval. Then track the project as you move through the project itself and later apply for reimbursement. And again, there is a decent amount of digital paperwork that needs to be done. It has to be done properly. And only eligible expenses will be reimbursed. So the main categories that can be reimbursed are for construction, equipment, consultant services, and kind of a catch-all category that includes things like garages, pavement management software, and salt sheds, et cetera. I provided a link in the slides at the very end to a guide that Mast dot puts together that provides a very comprehensive look at the program and what eligible expenses are. So that's there for you all to dig into if you really want to dig into the details of the program. So last but not least, why do we love this program? It's fairly flexible and it provides a lot of authority at the municipal level for projects to determine how to spend this funding. That said, just as a reminder, all of the funding has to be used on public roadways. It cannot be used for private road repair. As well, the rules that the legislature has in place are the boundaries of the program. So there are some expenses that are not eligible. And we have to work within the boundaries of eligible expenditures for the program. Okay, so as I mentioned, this is a, Chapter 90 is dispersed through a funding formula. And each year, just a total amount of funding is approved by the legislature. For the past 11 years, funding for this program has been set almost level funded for, generally level funded for at $200 million. So that $200 million is divided up among all of the cities and towns based on the formula that you see here. So about 20% goes to, is calculated based on employment, about 20% is calculated based on population, and about 58% is calculated based on road miles. It's important to remember that if there are shifts in any of these categories in your community or in any other community across the Commonwealth, you may see shifts in how much you receive at the local level. And that's generally because if the funding overall remains level funded and there are shifts in these other categories, there's not any wiggle room there. So if one community grows in population or takes on additional road mileage, someone else is going to see a decrease in funding and vice versa. This is just a quick graph of funding history over the past 11 years. As I mentioned, we've been level funded at 200 million over the past 11 years. On the far right-hand corner, you'll see fiscal 23 calculations. And the difference between the yellow line and the red line is the purchasing power for the dollars that are available. So the yellow line is $200 million. The red line is the amount, the purchasing power adjusted for inflation based on FY12 calculation. So you'll see a significant decline there. Our most recent, recent figures are tracking construction inflation over FY12 at 65.7%. So we have seen, adjusted for inflation, the purchasing power of the program has gone down by about $131 million over the past 11 years. So in today's dollars, or I'm sorry, in $2012, today's 200 million is really only about 70 million. So we're working really with so much less purchasing power. Just briefly, I will just do want to say that over the past 11 years, we have seen a couple of supplemental programs and one additional year where there was a little bit of extra provided through the Chapter 90 program. We very much appreciate the supplemental funding for transportation. So we thank the legislature for that, but generally speaking, we've been set at 200 million. Now, down here at the very bottom, I have a figure FY24 Need. This is based on the MMA's biennial survey on Chapter 90. And we are calculating that the needs across the Commonwealth for Chapter 90 eligible programs, projects, is about $715 million to complete those projects in FY24 alone. So you can see how there is quite a bit of disparity with the amount of funding that the program provides and the amount of need that is on the ground. Now, in terms of advocacy, the MMA is asking for at least a minimum of $330 million per year. We're asking for a two-year authorization and we're asking for that to be indexed to inflation. I'll break this down for you just very quickly. We came to the $330 million figure because that would bring us up to level of the purchasing power for FY12. That's where the 330 million came from. The two-year authorization would allow for better planning and programming at the local level. It would also ease the burden for the legislature who has to go through this process every year, and it can be quite a long process. This year, the MMA submitted written and oral testimony for multiple hearings. We also organized a panel of chief municipal officials to testify, including your very own Mike Hale, testified in favor of an increase to the Chapter 90 funding. Several municipal officials submitted written testimony in support of an increase. Now, I'm just going to give you a snapshot of where we are. The Chapter 90 bond bill this year has not yet been fully processed through, passed through the legislative process. Both the House and the Senate have both passed their versions of the bill. There are two slightly different versions of the bill that have been passed. Both the House and the Senate have approved $200 million for a period of one year. And the difference between the two is both of them have added on additional funding for other transportation-related grant programs. But there's a slight difference in where they would like to see funding for those grants. So that's why there's a difference. At this point, we're waiting for those differences to be reconciled. We're hoping that that happens quickly. It's unclear the timing of that. At this point, a conference committee has not yet been convened. There's also conversation happening at the budget level. I just wanted to flag for you all. There's always a possibility for supplemental funding for transportation. Outside of Chapter 90, we always support that. This year, the Senate has proposed an additional $100 million in supplemental appropriations through the fair share revenue that would include 50% that would be dispersed based on the Chapter 90 formula and 50% that would be based on road miles. So I just want to flag that for you right now. The Senate is debating the budget. As we speak, I don't think that they have adjourned for the day. They just started that today.
Could you just repeat that one more time?
Yes, sure. The Senate piece.
Yep.
Yep. So in the Senate budget, there is a proposal for the use of $100 million of fair share revenues to support road and bridge funding at the municipal level. And 50 million of that funding would be dispersed through the Chapter 90 formula. And 50 million would be dispersed based on road miles only. So now, just quickly looking ahead, there are a few things that, you know, you can do as councilors, as officials. That's really helpful to elevate the profile of this program and just to keep folks informed about the limitations of the program. It's helpful to talk to residents and let them know what, you know, how this program works and that there are boundaries for this program and that there are likely to be additional needs at the municipal level. I'm not familiar exactly with what Gloucester has going on with your transportation projects. But we see across the Commonwealth that municipalities have a much higher need than they do have funding support. Stay tuned for advocacy opportunities from the MMA. We love to have members come to hearings, provide testimony. It's really important to get the local level perspective. Don't hesitate to call your legislators. It's really, really helpful to have those one-on-one conversations and let them know what's going on in your community. Take them to, you know, those potholes. Show them what's going on with whatever bridge you're working on. It's important for them to see what's happening. And then, as I mentioned just a minute ago, at this point, we're really hoping to raise the profile of the program and provide a little bit of a spotlight on how important Chapter 90 is. When we're funding projects through grant programs, we often have a moment of celebration after the completion of the program. Or I'm sorry, of the completion of the project. With Chapter 90, it's been infused into our municipal accounting for about 50 years now. And so we really love the idea of shining a spotlight on the projects that you're taking on and really just emphasizing how critical this program is to make sure that we're able to accomplish those projects. And then, last but not least, I just want to remind folks again that, you know, we see across the Commonwealth that many, many municipalities don't have the ability to assign local revenues to transportation projects and they are relying really heavily on the Chapter 90 program, which the legislature didn't always intend. You know, there's always a hope that Chapter 90 can also be matched up with local level revenues. And that's not always the case. We know that. You're not alone with any challenges related to funding transportation projects. And you're certainly not alone in advocacy. We are here to continue to advocate for additional funding for this program and in transportation funding in general. My last slide is just a handful of links. The very top link is probably the one of most interest to you all. It's that Chapter 90 document from Mast dot that goes through all the details of the program. It's very helpful. And then at the end is my contact information. I'm always available to you. Please do think of me and the rest of the team as a resource for all of you. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. So Mike, would you like to add a little bit to this and put it in perspective to us? Or do you think that it's, we want to just jump right into questions? What are your thoughts?
I think there's, you know, certainly some points that Adrian hit on that can be elaborated slightly. I mean, we're, for all intents and purposes, at June 1st right now, and the legislature has not voted. This year's Chapter 90 for us to be able to tap it. So within four weeks from now, five weeks from now, we're at the midway point for our construction season here in Massachusetts. This, last year, it's at 23's monies, as already spoken for, it's tied to projects that will happen any day now. But again, if we don't have, the legislature does not approve this to August, that puts us in a false schedule, which is very difficult to manage. And everyone's in the same boat as Gloucester, so competing against other cities and towns. It may have bigger projects. It may have better contracts for the contractor, not with this municipality. So the competition between all 351 communities is fairly dramatic when you get the money allocated so late in the construction season. We have seen influxes of one-time monies through, essentially, the Chapter 90 program when there's a balance. Or the governor decides to send a little bit of money towards the cities and town that is formulated based on miles, as Adrian mentioned. I think it's important to know that each road mile we accept as public earns currently on a basic, on the $200 million in the formula we have now, just over $4,000 per mile. Well, it's about $600,000 to pave a mile of the street. So the math's completely upside down. The idea that you can just accept more and earn more isn't true. The other two variables remain relatively static with nothing to do with road miles. The population is independent of that and the employment is independent of that. So the, you know, roughly six tenths of the formula is road miles. And so if you just do very simple math, about $4,000 per mile the city earns. So, you know, you take a small thousand-foot subdivision road that's private, you want to accept it as public. It's earning less than $900 a year. That, the cost of that be about $150,000 to pave. So becomes the city's responsibility. Becomes the city's liability. And it takes money from the existing backlog of Chapter 90 project, of Chapter 90 eligible projects that we have. So that's just something to keep in mind because oftentimes we hear, just accept them, you get more money. True, you get more money, but you're not getting a deal. So we can start with that. We can go through a number of questions, whatever you have for either Adrian or me.
Terrific. And I just want to note that there are seven attendees with their hands raised. And I just want you all to know that the oral communications are going to start immediately after this presentation. So right now, we're bringing this meeting a little bit out of order, but we see your hands and we'll be getting to you as soon as this presentation is over. So thank you for being on the call. So councilors, let's open it up for questions. I know Councillor O'Hara, I'm sorry, Councillor Grow has had his hands, hand raised since the beginning. And I'll start with him and then Councillor O'Neil, I just saw your hand go up, so you'll be next. So, Councillor Grow, you have the floor.
Thank you. I've just got a couple of rapid-fire questions just to, for clarifications. First off, Mike, I want to thank you for explaining the mileage and how much, because that was one of the questions. We get about $65, $650,000 a year in Chapter 70, or Chapter 90 now. That covers a mile of paving, basically, for, for a major project. So that.
Without sidewalks.
Without sidewalks. What's a sidewalk?
150 plus per foot.
Okay.
It's, it's cost more to the sidewalks than pave.
Got it. Can you explain, Adrian, a little bit more about the formula? And I think in context of looking at communities, I how is the employment calculated? And because I think about Gloucester as an aging community where we have more and more retirees and fewer and fewer people who live here that, that either work here or, or are employee, of employment age. Does that factor into our equation in terms of the funding?
That's a really great question. So the employment figures are provided by the Massachusetts Department of Unemployment Assistance. So I am not entirely sure how retirees are counted. I don't think that they're considered unemployed. So I'd have to look into that and get back to you. In terms of the other items in the formula, the population data is collected through census data from the United States Census Bureau. And the local road mileage is gathered from Mast dot's road inventory file. And these are updated regularly by your DBW department. So there's regular communication with that road inventory.
And then a couple of, last two quick questions. It's a bond bill. So is it, is it part of the FY budget process or is it separate from that, even though we get it through the cherry sheet allocations?
It is separate from the budget process. And it's, and it's done as generally annually, which is what, you know, again, you know, some of, some of what has been mentioned earlier that Mike mentioned around, you know, delays of the approval of this particular bill. You know, we would like to alleviate that by authorizing a two-year bill to make sure that we have that value a set for communities for a two-year period. So we don't run into that problem every single year that it might be delayed. But no, it is separate. It is a bond bill, so it doesn't mean it's borrowing at the state level. And it also means that it's on a, on a different schedule. And it's really on the schedule of the legislature.
It's a pity that we gave $2 billion back in tax dollars not too long ago. The last question I have is, are these bankable funds? If we, I mean, it's unlikely that we would bank funds like this because we have so many projects. But if we didn't have projects, could we bank that money? Or is it, is it spend it or lose it?
No, it is not spend it or lose it. No, it is not spend it or lose it. There is a time limitation for how long you can. Sort of bank the funding. It's essentially kind of like delay in spending the funding. There are communities that do do this. I've heard many, many stories about communities that have. Large projects, generally like large bridge project, or some of the very small rural communities that don't receive very much. In Chapter 98, and they need to hold it for a few years in order to say, take on. A paving project. That said, there is a limitation. I believe it's five years. Mike, Mike, correct me on that. And it also, you also have to submit a capital plan to Mast DOT. They need to know that you have a plan for it. And that you're thinking ahead, and you need to remain in regular communication with your Mast dot regional representative. So you, you, there is a possibility of losing funding if you don't maintain kind of all of those points of communication.
Thank you.
Counsel O'Neil, you had your hand up. You have the floor for questions.
Thank you. This, this is for Mike. I didn't quite write fast enough. A thousand dollars of. Road earns a nine hundred a year. How much does it cost to pave a thousand feet of road?
Just take a traditional thousand-foot-long subdivision road. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Who else has questions, counselors? Uh, Counsel Gross?
Yeah, just. You know, Mike, since we did our road, what, four years ago, and it was two hundred thousand dollars. Using your calculation of four thousand dollars. A mile. It would cost, we, the city would get. So it was two hundred thousand dollars for eighteen hundred feet of road. Four years ago, which would probably be three hundred thousand dollars now by. Conservative rate of inflation. But at those figures. Um, you'd get eleven hundred and sixty dollars a year. And then over twenty years. You would get twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. So you wouldn't even get. Close on Chapter Seventy money because we, we've heard about it. We heard about it the other night. From a couple of different sources that Chapter Ninety, not Chapter Seventy, Chapter Ninety money. Will, you know, the re, the reimbursement will help pay for it. Well, that's really not a fair assessment. And if, you know, and according to, and also like you said. It's fifty-eight percent of that is considered the mile. So you have to then cut that in half by forty, you have to subtract forty percent of that if you were, you know, on additional miles, so. Because I don't think our population or employment is going to change a whole lot in the next whatever. So I think that people need to understand how additional roads are not really, we're not going to get a whole, any. We're not going to get any benefit out of Chapter Ninety for additional miles of roads.
I actually think you go the opposite direction. I think you lose the benefit. Because we're on about a forty-year schedule right now for our existing public road miles. Roads need to be paved every twenty, twenty-five years, depending on the traffic. Some even sooner. They have heavy traffic on them. So if you have a road that once was private, is now public, and it's earning. Nine hundred dollars or, you know, four thousand dollars per mile, just save a mile-long road. It takes. You, you never earn that money back. Certainly not in the time period it needs to be paved, and for time it earns enough money to pave that road once. You've paved it six times because you're obligated at that point. You're responsible to pave that in good repair. So you, you go back, you go backwards. So now we'd be on a sixty to seventy-year paving schedule for our city roads. And that's a decision. I mean, that's a decision that the mayor and the council can make. I don't think it's a wise one to do so. I think it's, it's detrimental to those public roads that we need to keep in good condition. Majority of people drive on public roads every single day. The, the majority of their trip from work to home is on a public road. Yeah, they may need to turn onto their private road that's in poor condition, but ninety percent of the trip home wasn't on a good-conditioned road. For at least the best we can, given the funding that we have.
Thank you, Mike. I think, let's see, who else has a hand raised? Councilmember, your hand is raised. You have the floor.
Thank you, counselor, and, and thank you. Adrian. I suppose in, 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 in large, large picture, my question really should be directed at Ann Margaret and Bruce, but. As city councilors representing Gloucester thirty thousand constituents, and we get this question a lot, but it's not easy to explain it the way you have to us. Here. So the basic question is, from, from your and the MMA's perspective. Why? Why has the legislature made a decision to not index this funding? And, and it appears that they're directing us to seek alternate. Funding resources within our own municipal budgets or elsewhere. Because they're not providing it. So I'm just curious from your, there, there's got to be an answer to the, the why question. So it's lack of money.
Well, thank you, counselor, for the question. There are a few different theories about this. I will say that one theory is that there's concern over about it being a bond bill. And borrowing for these kinds of expenses. There's also, I want to just recognize the legislature now for, for funding that they have been providing through grant programs. So the legislature over the past several years has. Chosen to provide a significant amount of, of. To be administered through grant programs through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. And we appreciate those grant opportunities, but what we do know is that those grants do not reach all communities. And the difference between those grants is really just that. Also, with many of those grant programs, for example, the Small Bridge Repair Program. They may not cover all of the costs of the particular repairs that communities are taking on. So while those programs are really helpful. They don't really cover all of the need. And I have heard from some legislator, legislators that there is. You know, sort of, at least historically, it may not have been an, an understanding that Chapter Ninety is the main funding source for communities. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, some communities do have the capacity to assign local revenues. To local transportation projects. Some folks, some communities can do that on a regular basis. Some communities can do that. Maybe once every ten years to get through a particular project. But I would say that the majority of communities actually have a lot of trouble doing that. And rely very heavily on the Chapter Ninety program while also spending a lot of time. Applying for additional grant programs to supplement that funding. So. Our results, we're seeing communities that are going out and getting those grants. They're also needing additional support to maintain their roads and bridges. So I know that's not a complete, you know. Crystal picture of what's happening with the legislature, but there are a couple of different theories as to why. The, the funding level hasn't changed in a long time. The other piece, counselors, just to note that there have been a handful of these one-time funding programs. Like last year, we had the Winter Recovery Assistance Program, which was very helpful to communities. It was an additional hundred million dollars. Also very flexible spending. But it had to be used within a calendar year, so it had to be used right away. We appreciate that. You're welcome.
Thank you. Who else has questions to ask? And I just want to remind the public that we're going to be doing the oral communications after this presentation, so. Please stay on our call and we'll probably be there in about ten minutes. Let's see, who else has a question? Counsel Gross?
Yeah, Adrian. This is a, a unique situation just in Massachusetts. Is that not true?
With this particular road funding program?
With the road funding program and also. The, the public and private road program. Or not program, but situation.
Well, so I will just say that my understanding is that in New England, we do, because we have. Been settled in New England for a very long time. There is an interesting dilemma of the public and private roads that does not occur. In other states that may be younger states across the nation. In terms of Chapter Ninety as a funding program, my understanding is that it is not. Necessarily the only one that exists in the nation, but I have found that it is unique among New England. I think that New York may have a similar program. But other states are hoping to create a similar program. There are definitely advocates for cities and towns that would like to have a program like this that is. Just providing, you know, formula funding to communities to help to maintain their roads.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, my, my, point of my question was, is it other states? And you say that we're unique, that we actually have the Chapter Ninety money. And other states are just, each city and town is on their own.
Uh, well, I would want to do a review of, of the entire nation. I have a little bit more understanding of what's happening in New England. And I know that some of our neighboring states in New England. Are working for a program like this. Like Rhode Island doesn't have one that I'm aware of, and they would really like to have a formula funding program like this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Counsel Grow.
Thank you. I don't, I don't want to take too much of my time, too much time. Um, a couple of things. One, uh, Mike, can you explain how? Uh, our projects are dealt with when you deal with like the current project we have on Eastern Avenue, which is also a state road one twenty-seven. Is that a, is that a? Joint project with the state? Do we get funding separate from Chapter Ninety for, for projects like that? Or is that fall within our jurisdiction because it's within our city limits?
A state root-numbered. Highway, one twenty-seven, one twenty-seven A, one thirty-three, one twenty-eight. Those are the four we have here. Certain portions of those roads are under local jurisdiction. One thirty-three is nearly, it is all state jurisdiction. Most of one twenty-seven A. From the bridge to Rockport is local jurisdiction. One twenty-seven itself is, is, is an odd piece. It's state up to around just for Harrison Avenue, and then it goes, it's local control to Calgary Cemetery. Then it goes back to state control to High Street in Rockport. Um, then it falls back into local control for the town of Rockport.
Right.
So that portion that we're doing in Gloucester currently is, is, is our responsibility.
And finally, I want to thank you both for, for really illustrating the complexity of what we're dealing with and the limitations that the city. Is dealing with in terms of actual funding when we realize that we're only getting six hundred and something thousand dollars a year. For the issues that we're, we're dealing with. Mike, can you, can you speak a little bit? And thank you, Adrian, for coming to, to speak with us. Can you speak a little bit to remind people how many? Miles of private road versus public road we have in the city? And what that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year is supposed to be covering?
We have about ninety miles of public road in this community. Twenty miles of, of state, instead of twenty-three miles of state-controlled road. Uh, and the balance of that is private, which is somewhere around, I don't know, forty-ish miles of private roads. For the discussion of Chapter Ninety, the only ones that come into play are the accepted. Roads that have been accepted through a legislative process. And there's some other, there's some, there are some minor deviations from that rule. But they, they come into play in this conversation.
So roughly speaking, about fifty-four million dollars, if we had that dropped on our, our lap, we could cover. Public roads, but not any of the private roads or state roads.
Yes, that's, and again, that's a twenty-year cycle to do that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other further questions, counselors? Uh, Counsel O'Hara, and then Counsel Gross again.
Mike, if, if, Mike, if you could explain as far as the paving that the city undertakes. And as far as how National Grid, I know, I think you had said. If National Grid does excavation in a roadway. They're responsible for paving. Curb-to-curb? And is there any National Grid money involved with Eastern Ave project that you don't know?
So a couple-part question. I'll take the easy part first. Eastern Avenue's got no tie to any. Other utility work that's been done. That's a resurfacing project that was resurfaced. Um, after the gas explosion. And it needs to be more done to it. Now, so that's just a, a wear issue on that street, highly traveled. No other funding other than local funding for that particular road. Public utilities, not just National Grid, but any public utilities, they're regulated by the state DPU, not by the city of Gloucester. They have approved. Construction standards. Um, I'm not sure, let us say the process they go through for that approval, but DPU has. Standards. Curb-to-curb is not a standard for paving of any public utilities work. Unless, of course, they're going to take up the entire road. Mainline services. We can push moratoriums on public utilities for excavating into. Public ways. But generally speaking, when a public utility is. Desiring to open our road, there's a reason for it. Infrastructure to the aged. Is failed, or it doesn't meet the needs for the neighborhood. That could be a gas main expansion. Generally, what I try to do with National Grid specifically is I try to get a contribution for them. From them for projects that we jointly work on. So Mount Pleasant Avenue and Councilmember's Ward. In order to do the water work there. There's, we're, there's an encroachment, a certain distance to the gas main that isn't met. It's just the, the nature of the right-of-way there. So National Grid's obligated to replace that main. It wasn't necessarily on their capital list for this year, but the water work was on my capital list. They adjusted their capital list. So they will contribute to the paving. They won't bear the burden of it, but they will carry a portion of it. Again, in Councilmember's Ward, the Long Beach neighborhood, that was kind of secondary to the Brian Net gas work. They finished that gas work, I think, last fall. Um, it was put back together today after the winter season, so let the trench settle out. And that was done by our vendor for National Grid. National Grid will pay us, then we pay them. It just helps us remain, retain quality control in the paving work. Um, and I think we get a better job from that.
Great, thank you. Any more questions? Counsel Grow and Counsel Gross.
I'm sorry, I thought I was done, but you brought this up on the National Grid. I know it's not Chapter Ninety, but what recourse do neighbors have when National Grid comes down their street? Cutting a trench in what was previously a pretty reasonably non, non problematic road. And now they're created a trench that eventually, in a year or two years, is going to start to settle and create. Issues where there never was issues. And I'm talking about private roads and specifically, you know, specifically offshoots from. Made, made projects like happening on Mount Pleasant. A number of streets have been. Cut into and they've all been capped, you know, where they've done the repairs, but. There's going to be problems there within a couple of years. How do we, how do we respond with them?
If the. Public utility. Follows the DPU guidance for putting that road back together again. They shouldn't, shouldn't fall apart. Um, but if they don't, which they frequently do not, it will fail. And I chase them on public ways. I don't know if I have the authority. I certainly have done. I, I can, I can ask on a private way. But I don't have any authority. It's not my way to say it's. I don't have the authority.
But do residents have an, the, the authority to go after them and say, hey, you know, you, you, you put this line down our street and you, you ruined the road? Good luck?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a tough one, because you need to have someone who knows who to talk to. Could you call DPU? Could you call your, your, you know, state, you know, representative? There's probably a lot of ways to do it. I think starting with the actual project manager, which we generally know who they are. Is the first place to start. Um, they, there is a new position with the National Grid. That coordinates the resurfacing of, of, of their work. But I don't know if that's just new work, rehab work, service work. I mean, National Grid's so. Divided into these little, these tiny little silos that it's difficult to keep track of. You know, the corrosion control is different than the. You know, the corrosion control is different than the main relay group or the new main group or the service group, uh, whatever it may be. But I think start with the project manager. Um, we could probably provide that information or at least a paving coordinator, and we can provide, provide that information as well.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry for getting off track, I just, I brought it up.
They're all good questions, council.
Good question. Yeah, thank you. Um, Council Gross, and then I think we have to wrap up. Um.
Right, um, Mike or Adrian, um, so, Mike, you say we have roughly ninety miles of roads. I am, from what I looked at, that's what we are, our chapter ninety formula mileage is covered. That's what we're getting um, reimbursed for. Is that strictly the public roads?
Yes, the ninety miles of public roads.
Thank you, counselor. And um, just to summarize, I wanted to just remind the members of the public that are on the call, because the councilors all know this. But um, back in January, February, our council actually submitted a letter to our um, state rep and our state senator to support the MMA three hundred and thirty million dollar request. And we did send that to their attention and asked them to lobby hard for us. And we gave very specific information that was submitted by Mike Hale, which basically, Mike, if I remember correctly, it was um, the cost of um, the, in order to take our six hundred and eighty thousand from last year, chapter ninety, had it been truly realized as what it needed to be, it would have been one point six million. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, on the, the, the biannual survey that MMA um, disperses to the communities, Gloucester has put in for approximately a million dollars more than we receive for the past X number of years, I can't recall how many years, but yes, we've asked about a million dollars more to cover, based on our pavement management plan.
So we did push proactively for that increase to mirror what MMA had put in. And I think the most important thing we can do, councilors and members of the public, is continue to advocate with our two-state legislators, just to remind them about where we are today and where we need to be. Um, so I think that concludes this presentation. And um, I really want to thank um, Adrian for, for being here with um, to join our city council to talk about this very important matter. We talk about it every single day here amongst all of our councilors and all of the public. So very helpful and timely. And Mike Hale for um, taking the time out of your busy day to, to be here to help answer these questions. So um, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Um, thanks for having me, it's great to meet everyone. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any other questions that come up. And I did take a few notes um, for things to follow up with you all on, so I'll be in touch soon.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Adrian.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is oral communications.
Thank you, um, the public. She'll have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral commu- communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Our communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate. And the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same and a copy shall be forward to, forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. And tonight we will ask, um, Council O'Neal, are you able to um, to do the timing? Yes. Yeah, okay, so if you would just um, signal that at um, ten seconds before three minutes, um, signal it and just say, um, time's up. And then I'll just echo what you just said, that would be great. Thank you. And um, to those of you who have their hands raised right now, um, we have seven of you. Um, we ask that you um, introduce yourself and your address and state that clearly. And then you have up to three minutes to speak to us on matters not on the agenda. And I just wanted to remind all of you that this is not our public hearing. We do have four matters later on in the agenda on four different public hearings. Um, and um, this is just for oral communications, and we thank you for your patience tonight. Um, so um, Madam Clerk, if you would bring the first person in, and um, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you, Joanne.
It's Gregory Doe.
Good evening. Good evening, uh, Gregory Doe, thirteen Thompson Street, also known as Seven Whites Mountain Road. Over a week ago, Gloucester's historic city hall almost succumbed to a fire. It would have been a tragedy to lose such a landmark building. Thankfully, the fire department headquarters was a block away from many fire hydrants in the neighborhood. That the maintenance and collect of the building allowed a fire hazard to exist in that room is questionable. But now it's all city departments on deck to install fire protection city in the city hall, so it doesn't happen again. If only the city was so responsible to the needs of its neglected neighborhoods with inadequate water systems for fire protection. This pack's weak with drought conditions, how many brush fires have we had in Gloucester? Up in Lynn, the Lynn Woods fires have been threatening neighborhoods. My neighborhood, Whites Mountain and Becker Lane, we've had in the past ten to twenty years, three brush fires consuming over ten acres, a chimney fire and a dryer fire in the past few years. How long before we lose a home or life before the city acts? I don't want to lose my home, and the city doesn't want to lose its home. The city has a history of allowing neighborhoods like mine to develop without care for infrastructure and service. Just issue another building permit, put in another private road, and let's not take care of it. This summer, we all will probably experience another drought with water restrictions. How much water would we save by replacing antiquated and half-assed systems of pipes? As in my neighborhood, a lot. In my neighborhood, pipes run two feet deep to ten feet deep. Two feet, you ask, why don't they freeze? Well, they leak so much, they're not going to freeze, and they leak all year long. In choosing, I've come to call Gloucester the city of no, because every time I've asked for some help with water potholes, the reply is no, private neighborhood. I've also called Gloucester the city of more, as in, we want you to pay more in taxes, but we want to give you less in services. As a Gloucester taxpayer, many residents feel we are at the whim of the mayor and the DPW director. Says who gets services and who gets improvements? Who makes these decisions to install water lines and pave roads? In the private roads I've listed in previous oral communication, who paid for this new water infrastructure? Where did the money come from? We as taxpayers demand to know this, you as councilors should demand to know this, who made those past decisions. Um, want to thank Rust Island and Haskell Court for all their support, and I want to thank your councilors for all your work. Good night.
Thank you so much, Greg, appreciate it. Um, next person that would like to speak to us for up to three minutes. And I also wanted to just note that our CFO, John Dunn, has joined us, as well as our general counsel, um, Suzanne Egan.
I was just asked to unmute, am I on?
Um, we can hear you, um, thank you, Robinson Cox, um, family. So you have um, three minutes to speak to us, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, this is Tom Robinson Cox, I live at five Haskell Court. And at risk of four unit tears, once again, with a report on our lack of sufficient water supply, I would like to take this opportunity uh, to inform you. The mayor did contact us by email and by mail last week in response to our recent oral communications requesting the city to repair our deficient water supply. His response advised us that he's working to get a complete picture of the private water infrastructure in the city. Uh, that he has asked the DPW and city staff to pull together all the relevant information data so he can fully understand the situation of private water infrastructure in the city. In other words, we residents of Haskell Court should hurry up and wait. This situation doesn't need a citywide analysis. We have an emergency and it needs to be fixed now. Do you, does the mayor know what it's like to live without adequate water supply? To not be able to take a shower or flush your toilet when you need to? We've been taking, we've been paying our taxes and water bills faithfully for decades. The same as other residents in the city whose water pipes are maintained at no extra cost to them. We expect to have the same services and considerations as they do and not to be singled out because of some bureaucratic sleight of hand from the past. The city can find a hundred thousand dollars for a four-hundredth year anniversary birthday party and can, can pay to repair a decades-old water leak at Becker Circle. They can certainly afford to repair our clogged-up water pipes. A year ago, the mayor invited me into his office and heard my concerns about this lack of water supply. And he was sympathetic to our plight, having had similar problems with his own home. He offered a possible solution. If the residents of Haskell Court agreed to pay for the paving through a, through a betterment, the city would shoulder the expense of replacing our water pipes. We went along with that. We submitted a unanimous, unanimously signed petition for the paving betterment as per instructions from Scott Memhard, our ward counselor. And it took seven months to get a quote from the DPW. After a year of waiting and talking, we still have the same problems, only worse. Our water flow is down to a trickle at times, and we have insuppression, insufficient pressure to take a shower, flush your toilet, or do laundry.
Ten seconds.
Please, I am asking the mayor and the city council do the right thing and help us. Only the mayor has the ability and authority to have the city replace our water pipes. We would be forever grateful. We have done our part, and now it's up to the mayor to do his. Thank you.
Thank you so much, being on the call, Tom. Um, next person. We have Ann Strong, and welcome. If you would tell us your name and address, you have up to three minutes to chat with the council.
Thank you, President Gilman. My name is Ann Strong, and I live at forty-four Crafts Road on Rust Island. And I'm here to speak again about Rust Island's need for deep water for fire protection. The city has known since two thousand and eight that Rust Island should be a priority for getting deep water. At the February twelfth, two thousand and eight city council meeting, then Fire Chief McKay stated that our neighborhood was in greater need than others. Please read those minutes, February twelfth, two thousand and eight. While I empathize greatly with my fellow Gloucestafarians on, in the Becker Circle neighborhood and on Haskell Court, and something really needs to be done for Haskell Court. Given that fifteen years have passed since this was brought to the city's attention and that ours is a critical fire safety need, I am asking Mayor Virga if he will put Rust Island at the top of the list of water projects. I understand that he is compiling a list of neighborhoods and streets that need attention. However, this has gone on for fifteen years. It was first brought to the attention of the council and the mayor during the Kirk administration. As for funding, I'm wondering if any ARPA funds can be reallocated or monies from the general fund used. Uh, we received, I think, twenty-three million dollars in ARPA funding, which can be used for infrastructure such as water. Uh, I saw an article recently in the Gloucester Times that one point five million dollars in ARPA funding was being used for a parking study in downtown Gloucester. Um, and uh, a wayfinding project and uh, electric assessment. Um, I can tell you uh, what the, I can do the parking survey for you, I think we all can. Um, and, and I think we don't have to charge for that, it's terrible. But I'm hoping that the mayor will make this a priority. And that's all I have to say tonight, I really appreciate your time and your consideration, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. And as we bring the next person in, um, Madam Clerk, I'd just like to let members of the public know that if you want to look at tonight's packet, if you go on governance and then go to city council and then go to packets, you can see tonight's packet. And in that packet, you will see um, pages forty-one to fifty-one. Um, those are the responses to the folks that came to speak at our meeting, um, the last meeting, which was earlier in May. So that's just a way that you can connect with the, um, the follow-through of what we're hearing in public comments. So, um, Joey, um, Whitney, welcome. And if you would introduce yourself and your dress, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us.
Well, hi, it's kind of a, I'm kind of a cipher here, because it's Ann Strong again. Um, and uh, please forgive me, um, but I, I would like to play a, a thirty-second recording made by my neighbor, Joey Whitney. And I'm asking for your indulgence, and, and I know it's an indulgence, because um, well, he had a very important prior commitment, so he couldn't be in person on the call to speak. And also, he's a little shy, would you be willing to make an exception and let me play this for you?
If it's thirty seconds, and you can, um, Joanne, if you could um, allow um, Ann to screen share, um, you have my permission.
That's okay, I can just play the voice, I, I can play the voice, um.
Oh, um, that, that's a little bit out of order, but um, I, I'm, I'm fine with it, so um, if it's short, go ahead.
She left the meeting, um, I guess she must have hit something. She's not on anymore.
Oh, okay.
If she comes back.
Okay, back, we'll, um, we'll allow it, unless there's an objection. Um, so next person to um, to speak, Carl McKay. If you introduce yourself in your dress and you have three minutes to talk to us.
Welcome. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, my name is Carl McKay, I'm at one sixty Washington Street, Gloucester, Mass. Um, I have a concern about the communications that took place about the construction on Eastern Ave. Um, I have, in the past forty-eight hours, received numerous phone calls, being so popular in the city of Gloucester, about concerns that access to three major grocery stores, three major pharmacies, and pretty much all of East Gloucester, as well as the East Gloucester School, was absolutely annihilated with these two major construction projects that were coexisting together, consisting of East Main Street and Eastern Avenue. I understand that the work needs to be done, but most of the citizens of Gloucester found out from the Rockport Police Department that this was taking place. The lack of communication about this has me troubled as far as elderly not being able to get medications, their meals on wheels in that area. Being a resident of thirty-seven years of Harrison Avenue area, whether it was on Harrison Av- Adams Place, where I had grown up, it concerns me that this took place the week before Memorial Day, where most of the residents of, um, I, 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 I'm drawing a blank here, between Long Beach and the island there by Good Harbor Beach, oh, come to open up their summer homes this week, which adds a, 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 a ton more bit of traffic into that area. Now, with the construction on one thirty-three, between the paving at the Marina and the paving or the construction with Tony Tally's was, it was impossible for people to access that, they needed to use one twenty-eight. I'd like to thank Jeff Worthy and Tracy O'Neal for pretty much trying to answer my concerns today. I was unable to connect with the mayor's office about this. Um, but I'm a bit confused why this isn't taking place in the evening as it could be, as Mike Hale explained, it could be very confusing whether it was state-run roadwork or um, local world work, but I'm pretty much sure that he explained it earlier that this lands within the city's work. And why it wasn't communicated better with the citizens of Rockport, as well as the citizens of Gloucester, where most people were coming to find out about this late Saturday night and Sunday afternoon, and it all started on Monday morning. Um, where most parents gave up on bringing their kids to school. School, I received messages from the school bus people that were, um, had no knowledge of this, that could have left earlier to make sure that they were picking up the kids on time. had no knowledge of this, that could have left earlier to make sure that they were picking up the kids on time. I'm not quite sure on that clarification.
Ten seconds.
Extremely concerned with the photos that I sent to Tracy O'Neal and Jeff Worthy about the safety of people actually entering one twenty-eight rotary, um, the, the second rotary where Market Basket was, because at the time, the entrance off of the rotary into Market Basket's parking lot was shut down. So the cars were entering one twenty-eight in the opposite direction to go to the extension towards the lights heading to Gloucester. I have sent them both photos on this. I, I understand that we can put up a sign on the rotary months in advance about beach stickers and beach parking. But why this major artery to the city of Gloucester was neglected so bad? And this debacle was created shutting off pretty much all access to East Gloucester and to Rockport.
And Carl, we've given you about fifteen seconds over your time limit. So if you could wrap up, that would be great. Thank you.
I apologize. I'm just looking for, um, to find out who was responsible and why this communication was so lax. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Val, would you like to bring in, um, Ann Strong again or the next speaker?
Um, let, um, let us bring in Ann if, if you would.
Good, Joey Whitney.
Ann has assured us, showed us it's going to be short, so.
Yes, thank you, President Gilman. Thirty seconds. I hope that you can hear it.
I'm seven years old and I live on Third and Seventh Way. And I go to one church school, school and I'm in first grade. I came here tonight because I have my school play and my book. I want to say guys that I'm scared of fire. If I'm not here, I was. They can save me if there's not a fire hydrant near my house. So please put a fire hydrant near my house. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, next person. We have Jeff Tar. Jeff, I'm welcome and, um, introduce yourself and your address and you have up to three minutes to talk to us.
Thank you, Council President. Hi, my name is Jeff Tar. I live at forty-nine Hart Street, known Jeff's Variety at seventy-one Eastern Ave. As most of you know, Eastern Avenue was under construction this week, milling and resurfacing, as Kyle just told us. And we wondered, how does this happen on Memorial Day week? Why does the work start at seven AM on a major thoroughfare in our city on the week of Memorial Day? Why? With other possibilities available, the director of Public Works chooses this week. It is nothing but a huge inconvenience to the neighbors, business, commuters, and our DPW director chooses this week. Why didn't anyone know that this was happening? The city councillors that I spoke with on Sen- Sunday and Monday didn't know anything about it. They told me that a post on social media from the Rockport Police Department is the first they saw of it. As did I and many others that I have spoken with. Again, how does this happen? The DPW director, the mayor's office, or the new communications director that the mayor hired refused to notify, notify anyone of this project. So the neighborhood and the businesses on this stretch of Eastern Avenue were left in the dark until Rockport posted it. So why do we have a communications director? Why doesn't our DPW director like to communicate with our council who represent the people? Might the council have posted upcoming project on social media or the GD Times? It is my understanding that this has been known for several weeks. So why all the secrecy? How is this acceptable? Why isn't there any accountability? This is an incredible inconvenience to the entire East Gloucester community. I spoke with the McKechnys at Wolf Hill and Sue Foster at the barbecue store. For Wolf Hill, this is their busiest week, Memorial Day week, with tens of thousands of merchandise to move. What happens? The DPW director sees no problem closing Eastern Avenue to two-way traffic and creating an absolute mess. Sue from the barbecue store told me there are three weeks of business where she moves most of her inventory. One being, and this is the first one, being Memorial Day, one being Father's Day. And then the last one is the Fourth of July week. The DPW director decides it's a good idea to mill and resurface Eastern Avenue during the day. My variety store has lost fifty percent of its business this week. Because the DPW director thinks it's a good idea to resurface Eastern Avenue during the day on this week. No thought into how I've hired summer help, increased my payroll, and now facing the choice of sending home the new help, are trying to figure out how to make payroll with fifty percent less business. But does he care? Get all the facts, Director. When you choose to do a large construction project on a holiday week, get out of the office and come talk to us. Make an informed decision. The arrogance and disregard of this DPW director in this administration to disrupt us to this extent and just say, please excuse the inconvenience, is appalling and unacceptable. I'm asking the council, who wasn't informed of this construction, to reschedule Thursday's paving. Let's move it to seven PM. Let's not do it at seven AM on Thursday morning. It'll make sense, common sense. Don't allow the DPW director to say this can't be done. Please stand up to him and allow for normal traffic flow for the rest of the week. We business owners and users of the road need this to be open during the daytime. The business owners don't need to lose more sales. If this can't be done, then move the repaving schedule till next week and schedule it during evening hours, seven PM. I'm also asking this council to designate major thoroughfares such as Eastern Ave, Bass Ave, and Washington Street to nighttime work only through an ordinance. This is a common sense approach to rectifying a problem when work has to be done of this caliber. Please stand up and represent the voters who put you into office and stop allowing the decision makers of City Hall to make bad decisions. I know there are good people there, but where is the common sense? Thank you, councils. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. Next, um, next up, if you would introduce yourself in your address and you have up to three minutes to talk to our counselors.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Oh, hi, this is Catherine Ryan at seventeen High Rock. The Gloucester Public School District enrollment plummeted from twenty-ten to twenty-nineteen from three-three-seven-two to two-eight-eight-six and down a third at the high school. The percentage of graduates heading to college, graduating high school and attending attendance has also plummeted. During this alarming ten years nosedive predating the pandemic, the huge reason for the fall off, number one, members of the school committee, school administration and city leadership said and continue to say egregious racist and non-factual comments that undermine the district and cover up rather than do the right thing. Keep their committee and board seat and write letters of support for each other. Number two, the school district leadership has been focused pretty much exclusively on school consolidation and Gloucester Education Foundation to the detriment of the district. If that focus was for the better, the enrollment and student performance would have increased. It's time to review GFS and GPS's collaborative arrangement and establish some firewalls. Some best practices for successful foundation and school partnerships include school committee members being ineligible for board membership on the foundation and vice versa. Ditto any big donor crossovers. School district site council members and GFS members should not be hired by the district for positions with financial gain related to school projects, consulting, et cetera. Paul Revel, Massachusetts former secretary of education and professor at Harvard, nationally recognized, was interviewed on BPR October twentieth, twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. He stressed how consolidations, school choice and transportation were a disaster in Boston. In every neighborhood, every child should have access to a quality school. And what are we going to do with our building plan and our transportation supports to make better reality? It's a common sense reality that we take for granted in the suburbs, but we can't take it for granted in the city. We've developed a plan of choice and transportation that's based on the resolution of a busing dispute from now on, half a century ago. We got to rethink it. It's an overall systemic failure. People want to be in their neighborhoods and we have a Boston mayor committed to green types of strategies in terms of clean air, clean water, clean streets, end quote. Revel assumed his vision as a slam dunk given in the suburbs. And yet ironically, we've undone his dream here in Gloucester and are following the failed model. Our consolidation approach was already backwards in twenty-twelve and twenty-sixteen. We had five outstanding sites for elementary schools, which we undid, destroying livable, walkable neighborhoods that were ideal. And now when the school opens on Webster, we're busing to redistribute. Please halt the consolidation plan for Beaman and Plum Cove or any more consolidations. Please address the accountability at the district leadership level.
Ten seconds. Thank you.
Well done. Thanks.
Thank you, Catherine. Next person to speak, you have up to three minutes to talk to the council for matters not on the agenda, which you introduce yourself in your dress. David.
Hello, yes, this is David Enos from Two Haskell Court. I'm also on this call today to speak to the situation of the water pressure. My grandfather actually built this house. It's been here for years. And at this point, the water pressure has gone to the ridiculous level where I'm just, uh, my neighbors having fun with each other. One would be out watering the lawn. The other can turn on this hose and you just see the water pressure just drop. There's not enough water pressure on this street for people to be taking showers at the same time, doing laundry at the same time. It's really at a critical problem here. And I'll just be brief and it really, something needs to be done about this. It is the city's water line. We pay our taxes, we pay our water bills, and we'd like to see action on this soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person with a hand raised. Deborah, welcome. If you'd introduce yourself in your dress, you have up to three minutes to talk to our council. Welcome.
Hi, excuse me, I'm not really feeling well tonight, so I may be a little disjointed, but this is Debbie Leaco's forty-one Woodward Avenue. Um, I just want to address that, um, regards to the recent presentation tonight on the private public road and the funding the city receives. Um, I appreciate Adrian and Mike's input on this. But I just need to make a statement regarding, um, how the city council, I'm hoping after the private road repair, uh, committee, that the city council is willing to sit down and come to some better resolutions for the taxpayers of this city, where we have forty miles of private roads. Now that being said, I'm not sure a lot of you are aware of how my road was done back when the sewer went in. We're promised a new road. We got assessed a betterment, just like the public roads. But yet our road was constructed subpar, um, construction standards started falling apart after about a year. And last year, we ran into a situation where we had a large gully in the road, which would have made it difficult for emergency vehicles to come through, fire, police, ambulance, et cetera. And that's a, a public hazard and the city would not repair it. I had asked Mike Hale to repair that one section. We got three estimates on redoing our road by ourselves and repairing. Um, all three contractors said the road was never constructed properly. We are presently still paying a betterment on this road. And, um, I would hope that the city would accept some responsibility for at the very least doing a pothole under section, um, under chapter forty-six N. The city does have a right to repair private roads. And it doesn't necessarily mean they have to assess a betterment. Um, I've got that law right in front of me. I can quote it if you'd like. Um, it's easily accessible on the Mass General Law site. We've been pretty much been told that we have no choice but to go into a betterment program when it comes to repairing these private roads within the city. But under state law, chapter forty-six N says the city has the ability to do repairs on private ways. So I'm asking the city council to somehow find the funds to put money aside to do at the very least the potholes on the people that are on private ways. My road has a public access to a pri- a public landing for the Little River Landing. Boats cannot access it, access it via the public way on Stanwood Avenue because of the railroad crossing. And they frequently travel across our road and damage our road, um, and the construction going on in Stanwood Point. So when it comes down to emergency access, we need to make sure these potholes are fixed and they weren't. We had, we had plow truck drivers that didn't want to come down here last winter. Um, and I'm just asking the city to sit down and talk to the citizens more about finding some relief for the people on the private roads. So we can make these roads easily passable for our heavy equipment and emergency vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Um, and, um, we have the final hand, um, Mary Ann Boucher. Would you introduce yourself, Mary Ann, in your dress? And you have up to three minutes to talk to us for matters not on the agenda.
Hi, Mary Ann Albert Boucher, ninety-three Mount Pleasant Avenue. Um, I wasn't going to speak, but after listening to all these people tonight, I'm just wondering how much ARPA money was designated to any of the roads in the city? Is, is there a number put on ARPA funds for any road repair, whether it's public or private? Where is the list of, uh, so the public can see where the ARPA funds are going? Because not for nothing, Haskell, Haskell Court, we should all be ashamed of ourselves for that not being taken care of this many years later. Um, Crafts Road, we all should be ashamed of ourselves that those people, um, have one fire hydrant that sits, um, outside of Crafts Road. Um, what are we doing? Um, we're, we're developing at a, at a very fast pace, yet our infrastructure, it, it from just the few people that are talking tonight, our infrastructure can't handle, can't handle these smaller problems. Why are we building if we can't handle the problems that we already currently have? And it seems like that we've been dealing with for many, many years. And as, as Jason said, um, he's concerned about, um, I'm assuming it's Marble Road that stretched that the gas company on your road, um, just dug up. You're concerned about that. You're concerned about that, just like everybody else is concerned about, about their own individual streets. And we should take care of them. We should take care of Jason's road if it's not taken care of properly. We should take care of the court behind my house that the construction project has completely destroyed, um, since September. Um, where, is there ARPA money to take care of it? Um, I think it's time to listen to the constituents instead of, um, and let the constituents speak, maybe gather them all together to see what they really want for the city. The elected officials are serving the people and it's time to really sit, sit down, um, and, and really have an, an, an open discussion in City Hall. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Patty Amaral. Um, you have up to three minutes to introduce yourself and tell us your address and speak to the council.
Where? I came to a meeting in January of this year and I talked about Burnham's Field. Today I was at Stageford Park with my granddaughter. Every step I take, I have to watch what she's doing, where our hands are going. What's going to happen to her on this equipment? The car is tilted. I think that there might be a little sinkhole on one side of it. Um, that no, no wheel for anyone to stare. Um, the handicap swing, we got something with handicap swings. Why can't we have handicap swings at work? Why? So, so the thing is, on the open space at one point, we went around and we made lists of everything that was, you know, issues at the, at the playgrounds and open spaces, right? Then we did that and then we brought it back to the open space committee and we tried to, you know, brainstorm how we can get some of these things done. Some things individuals on the open space took and they said, okay, I took Meadows Field and we all know what happened with that. But other people took other places and, and, and we brainstormed. We figured out how we can do this. But something needs to be done because we have very unsafe structures, structures that open spaces aren't getting cared for. Whose job is it to keep care of these things? Is it our DPW director? Is it the Open Space Committee? Is it the president of the city council or any of you city councillors? I don't know, but there's got to be an answer here. You know, we pay taxes. I go to other playgrounds. I go to Beverly now. Because our playgrounds, they need care. Even the kids at St. Anne's are going to Burnham's and the things still haven't been fixed since January. And before, you know, I've been on here talking about this, the safety of our children should be paramount. Let's work together. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. People, that's a lot of people that can make a difference here. Let's do it. Let's make safety for our children, number one. And I was down the school today doing Joseph's memorial. I'm very sad and about the point two. It brings me, Jesus, just tears, the way we do not respect that monument. You took your school away. You took his school away. You took, I mean, you took his land away. Now you could at least weed whack his memorial. At least do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is confirmation of new appointment.
I'd like to turn control of the meeting over to our Chair of O and A, Sean Nolan.
How you doing tonight? So first up, we have Bernadette Miranda for the Human Rights Commission, fill an unexpired term. Term to end to fifteen twenty-five. Bernadette, you with us tonight?
I am.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you. Yourself?
Excellent. If you could just tell us a little bit about yourself to the council and why you want to be on the Human Rights Commission, that'd be excellent.
Certainly. My name is Bernadette Miranda. I was born here. I was raised here till about the age of twelve. My family. My biological family split up and I moved away. I was raised in Topsfield and now I've been back for. Maybe about fifteen years or so here in Gloucester. And the reason why I decided to try for this appointment was. When I was thirty-five years old, I became, I was a victim of a violent crime that left me disabled. I am doing a lot better, but I, I do recall what it was like trying to. Access services, find help, that kind of thing. And it was really, really hard, especially having a brain injury. I mean, a, a regular person would have a hard time getting through a lot of the. The legal speak or whatnot of a lot of, a lot of the stuff that you have to go to to get service. That it made me think like what it, you know, I knew how hard it would be was for me with a brain injury and I could. Also imagine if there were a language barrier or. A lack, lack of education or other things that would make it difficult for people. So I think that was, that was really. The most pressing for me. So I, I would like to try to make a difference and I would like to advocate for people. Who would need, you know, would need that and, and. I think that the Human Rights Commission would be a great avenue for doing so as, as. I've heard about the brochure and. A website, there was, we were talking about this last night and how they were saying that, you know, that a lot of this stuff could be. Right there for people, you know, if you're looking for this, you need to go here if you, that kind of thing. So anyhow. That's pretty much, pretty much it.
Excellent. Thank you, Bernadette. Is there any counselor questions or comments for Bernadette tonight? Counselor girl.
I just want, as the representative to the Human Rights Commission, I'm, I'm glad to see that Bernadette is stepping up to, to join the commission. There are a couple more seats open for that and I think it'd be great to have a, a full, full council, our full commission to. Meet the, the issues and concerns of the, of the city. So I welcome her wholeheartedly and look forward to seeing her, sir.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Alrighty. Bernadette, thank you for looking to do this. I think you're going to be a great fit. So that being said, I'll read the motion. A motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council O'Hara. The Orders Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Bernadette Miranda. To the Human Rights Commission, fulfill an unexpired term, term to end two fifteen twenty-five, and I so move.
Motion's made and I think it was seconded by. O'Hara. Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley absent. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross? Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes, and thank you, Bernadette.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Yes.
The S's have it, eight in favor, one absent. Thank you so much, Bernadette. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the consent agenda?
Counselors, would anyone wish to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Counsel Majota?
I don't really wish to take anything off. I just want to take my name off. With a C C two twenty-three dash zero three one. Washington Street in C C. Two twenty-three dash zero three zero. I want to get more from me, more of a better understanding. I know Counsel Worthley's been working hard on this. This is War Three. I want to have more War Three meetings. I'm okay with it going to O and A. I just don't feel comfortable. With this until I get more information with my residents.
Okay, so you'd like to. To move to. Amend Council, City Council two thousand twenty-three oh three oh, as well as City Council two thousand twenty-three. Oh, three one.
Correct.
As well, those are the only ones that have both, both of your names on them, right?
Correct.
Okay, so for those two. Is there a motion to, to amend? By removing Counsel Majota?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Grow, seconded by Counsel Memard. Roll call vote on that. Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley absent. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
The S's have it, eight in favor, one absent. And so Counsel Grow has his hand raised. Would you like to remove something from the consent agenda?
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, I, I guess I would like to remove City Council orders twenty twenty-three zero two-nine through thirty-four. Mostly for clarification about whether or not they should be also referred to Traffic Commission.
Can you point to what numbers those are, Counselor?
Twenty twenty-three dash zero two-nine, twenty twenty-three dash zero three zero, twenty twenty-three dash zero three one. Twenty twenty-three dash three, zero three-two, twenty twenty-three dash zero three-three. And dash zero three-four. They're all the, the, the. Traffic and parking orders to be put in, but shouldn't they also be going to traffic?
I'm quite sure that those have been, but I'll, I'll ask Counsel Nolan to explain that.
Those matters were brought before the Traffic Commission. There were a lot of different options and different opinions and how this should work. And the Traffic Commission bounced back to us on what we thought would be the best way, whether it's turning right. With a restricted parking area or unrestricted turns from Grove Street. So they gave their, their piece and opinion and sent it back to us to be sent to O and A for us to evaluate.
Thank you.
And Counsel Nolan, does that also include Counsel O'Neill's two thousand twenty-three oh two-nine? Main Street and Duncan Street. And easily, did that one also go? Because that was another one that Counsel Grow mentioned.
That one has not been through traffic. And they may want to have a bite at that, but we'll, we'll definitely look at that and see what's going on. Counsel O'Neill, I saw you raised your hand.
Oh, go ahead, Counsel O'Neill. You have the floor on something you'd like to remove?
Yes, I'd like to remove my order twenty twenty-three dash zero thirty-five. GCO, chapter twenty-two. Regarding tractor trailer trucks going down Main Street. In speaking with some of the other businesses. That is not a good option for receiving deliveries without a tractor trailer truck. So I'd like to remove that.
Okay, so without, without prejudice?
Yes, please.
Okay, Counsel O'Neill has removed that without prejudice, so we can accept that removal. And did you have another one that you wanted to remove, Counsel O'Neill?
No, the zero twenty-nine, I did speak with Bob on this a couple of times. I'm not sure that it went actually quite through the Traffic Commission though, so. Whatever.
Would, would you like to, to amend that therefore and request that it also be referred to Traffic Commission? Oh, our Madam Clerk has her hand raised, so I must call on her.
Thank you. Counsel President, a little background on Council Order twenty-nine in regard to the Main Street. That's when we got the police station and courthouse project.
Okay.
Okay, so as you recall, I believe Counsel O'Neill put it on the previous agenda two weeks ago and then withdrew it. And then after she, after speaking with the Traffic Commission Chair. Chief Conley, I believe, or Joe Fitzgerald, she requested that it be back on and. Because of the timing, they would need this into effect by July, like after the July fourth.
Okay.
I did speak to the Chairman of the Traffic Commission. He felt like where they vetted it. Well, through the police and, and Counsel O'Neill that in order to save some time, it would not go back to the Traffic Commission.
Okay, so, so, so we'll leave that on as, as presented, Counsel O'Neill?
Yes, please.
Okay. Anyone else like to remove anything on the consent agenda? I'm seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Don't move.
Counsel Gross, second. Counsel Memard, second. Roll call vote, Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley is absent. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yep.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes, this have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk. Counselors, there are two matters that are on the unanimous consent agenda. One is information only. Which is communication from the MIS Director, status update on hybrid meeting timeline, return to Kairos. As an info only. And there's also Council Order. City Council two thousand twenty-three oh three six, gross. Amen GCO, chapter twenty-two, section twenty-two, two seventy. Parking prohibited at all times in section twenty-two, two ninety-one, tourway zones. By adding no parking at one twenty-eight Rogers Street for twenty-five feet in a southerly direction from the northern crosswalk. And a norally direction from the same northern crosswalk to corner of Gorton's parking lot entrance. At one oh, one twenty-eight Rogers Street, adding no parking at one twenty-eight Rogers Street. For twenty-five feet from both sides of southern crosswalk, adding no parking at one twenty-seven Rogers Street. For twenty-five feet in a southerly direction from the northern crosswalk and adding no parking at one twenty-seven Rogers Street for twenty-five feet. And a norally direction from the southerly crosswalk. So is there a motion to approve the two matters on the unanimous consent agenda? Counsel O'Neill, you have a question?
Yeah, point of order, I don't see that. I don't see that on the agenda, what you just read.
Okay, the unanimous consent agenda is posted as a separate element on our city council website. So it's there and that's the reason why I'm reading it is because it is there and I just want to make sure the public knows what it is. And so is there a motion to approve the? Motion made by Counsel Grow, I believe, I heard his voice, and seconded by Counsel Memard. Roll call vote.
Discussion, can we have discussion?
Okay, discussion, Counsel O'Neill?
Yes, I just. I'm, I'm looking at this in front of Gorton's, obviously, for twenty-five feet in a southerly direction from the northern crosswalk. And a norally direction from the same northern crosswalk to corner of Gorton's parking lot entrance. By adding no parking. Twenty-five feet from both sides of southern crosswalk. So I am a little confused. It's always where, no parking at one twenty-eight Rogers Street for twenty-five feet in a southerly direction from the northern crosswalk. So there are two crosswalks you're talking about, Tony?
Yes, there is.
Yeah. Yeah. Counsel, go ahead, state your point, Counsel Grow.
Motion is on the acceptance of the unanimous consent agenda. Not, not the, not the subject of the unanimous consent agenda.
Don't, aren't we allowed a discussion before we vote on something?
You want to, agenda or not accept the agenda to move it to O and A?
Yeah, Counsel Grow is correct, so I will accept his. His point of order. So there's a motion to accept and there was a second. Is there a roll call vote? Counsel O'Neill?
No.
Counsel Worthley is absent. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
No.
Um, there are.
Make a motion or reconsider.
So, hold on a sec, it's not, so this is for a unanimous consent agenda, so we have two people that have. Not approved it, so.
Yes, I understand.
Is there a motion to reconsider?
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
Um, okay.
The issue is about sending something to O and A. It's not about arguing the issue of what the, the subject is.
I understand.
So you're just saying you want to delay this for two weeks unnecessarily.
Because I don't understand it, yes, that's right.
It'll go to O and A and you can get all the clarification you need.
I'm not going to approve it.
Alright, we got it. I was in my, I withdraw my motion reconsider.
Second.
So the, the motion to reconsider is suspended.
I get it. Can I speak on this issue?
As the order generator, I will give you permission unless there's objection.
This is a safety, this is a considerable safety issue. And that is the reason it's on there. If you read your emails from Friday, you would have seen that this came from the safety officer from Gorton's. Because of, for the safety of their employees. I spoke with him on Friday. I told him I would try to move this as quickly as possible. I will report back that it will now be held up for two weeks.
Counsel O'Neill, do you want to change your vote?
That's fine. I don't understand the southern crosswalk, the northern crosswalk. Twenty-five feet, I think, is a lot. It's three car lengths.
Point of order.
Okay, we, we will put this on for the meeting in two weeks and we'll hold off on this, this safety matter. Because Counsel O'Hara and Counsel O'Neill do not wish to approve it. So eight, there were six in favor, two in opposition, and Counsel Worthley was absent. Counsel Nolan? Your hand is raised, I'm accepting your, your hand.
Just, just to clarification, one parking spot is twenty-two feet. So twenty-five feet is a far cry from three parking spots. One spot's twenty-two feet, standard by definition.
Okay.
I thought a car length was nine feet.
No.
No.
With.
Okay. The next order of business, and. Let me ask you a question. Does that mean that the, the information? let me ask you a question. Does that mean that the inf- the information only doesn't, um?
Yeah.
That, so. Well, that just stinks, because now I can't even explain something for information only. Um, which is. I don't, I don't understand that, but I, okay. I, I guess that's what we have to do. Um, all right, um, thank you, Councillors. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Um, I just want to mention that Counsel Worthy has joined the meeting.
Great, thank you.
The next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of May eighteen.
That was the concert.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm going to ask Counsel Memard, our Chair of BNF, to, um, to lead the conversation unless he wishes to defer to Counsel Gross, who chaired that meeting.
Yes, I, I thank you very much, Madam Chair. I've asked Counsel Gross to represent Budget and Finance this evening, as I was not present, uh, at the vote that he uh, conducted last Thursday. So, thank you very much, Tony.
Counsel Gross, you have a point?
All right, thank you. So, um, the first, um, order of business that we took up was a, um, budget transfer from DPW for oil and gas. Um, I will make, so it's a memorandum from DPW Director for, um, three transfers, and I will make those, um, motions and then explain them. Uh, the budget and, the building of, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee moved to recommend that City Council approve the special budget transfer. Oh, wait a minute, I gotta read it out of the minutes, don't I? Far off, no.
No, right from the template.
Right.
Many recommendations.
On a motion by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council approve special budgetary transfer twenty twenty-three SBT twelve in the amount of six thousand dollars from DPW Engineering salaries and wages temporary account as noted to DPW Central Services Motor Gas and Oil account as noted for the purpose of covering the cost of diesel fuel and gasoline for all city vehicles for the months of May and June of FY twenty-three. An ISO move, second.
Um, Counsel Gross, uh, moved it and, um, Counsel Worthy seconded it. Um, is there a discussion or a narrative, Counsel Gross?
Well, this, the, uh, the account has run dry due to the increased cost of fuel, both diesel and gasoline uh, over the course of the year since last July one. And they needed to transfer in some money so that we could keep the, all the vehicles fueled, all the vehicles in the city fueled up at DPW. So this is not just DPW vehicles, this is every department in the city other than the, um, school department. So, this and the next two, um, are going to do that backfill. So this is transfer in to fill that account.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Councillors? Um, seeing none, a roll call vote, Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthy?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes, yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Counsel Gross.
On a motion by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve special budgetary transfer SBT thirteen in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars from DPW Central Services Salary and Wages Temporary Account as noted to DPW Central Services Motor Gas and Oil Account as noted for the purpose of covering the cost of diesel fuel and gasoline for all city vehicles for the months of May and June of FY twenty twenty-three, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy. Is there a narrative, Counsel Gross?
Uh, same narrative.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthy?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Counsel Gross?
Next order of business is on a motion by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve special budgetary transfer twenty twenty-three SBT sixteen in the amount of seven thousand dollars from DPW Facilities Maintenance Wages Hourly Permanent Account as noted to DPW Central Services Motor Gas and Oil Account as noted for the purpose of covering the cost of diesel fuel and gasoline for all city vehicles for the months of May and June of FY twenty twenty-three, and ISO move.
That's it. Uh, um, Counsel Gross made the motion, and I think I heard Counsel Worthy seconded it.
Grow.
Um, Grow, I'm sorry, Counsel Grow seconded it. Um, um, is there a narrative, Counsel Gross?
Same.
Okay.
Out of, out of money, need gas.
Okay. Um, that's important. Um, any further discussion, Councillors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthy?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business?
Fill up those tanks.
Next order of business is, uh, from a memorandum from Captain EMS Director Kevin Cargan of the Fire Department Ambulance Billing and Collection. This is the ambulance, Fire Department Ambulance Billing and Collection Policy for FY twenty-four budget. On a motion by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the Gloucester Fire Department Billing and Collection Policy as presented by the Captain of EMS, Captain EMS Director and approved by the Mayor and further to approve the proposed fee schedule attached to and incorporated into the policy effective July one, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
And did you move it, Counsel Gross? Okay, Counsel Gross moved it and, um,
Second.
And it was seconded by Counsel Grow. Um, any narrative, Counsel Gross?
So, everybody, if you looked in the, um, Budget and Finance, there was a schedule of both fees and the policy for bill collecting. Um, so they haven't raised any fees in five years. You see that there was a, a, a significant jump in some of the fees, but they are sort of, they are in line, um, and their other communities are lagging behind, so they're a little bit ahead on some of the fees, but it's for the, the transportation and treatment of patients in the ambulances. And that's it. If you have any questions about the policy, it's, it's multiple, multiple pages, and the fee schedule is right in it as well as there is a, um, you know, comparison table also of the, of the local communities. So this is, there's three level of fees, the basic, uh, level of, of service, then the advanced level of service one, and then the advanced level of service two. Basic is just, you know, bandaging up, um, two is like uh, using an AED, no, not you, you, different, you know, IVs or different interventions, and then the other is more if they need, um, you know, an IED to be brought back and things like that, so.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Councillors, on the motion? Counsel Worthy?
Yes, I just want to add, I think Counsel Gross, Counsel Gross did a great summary, but I'd like to just add that, um, even though there are fees that are going up, this is, they haven't been raised in five years. And I think the message, and I mentioned it, Budget and Finance, I think Counsel Gilman, you were there too. I think there's an important message to say, um, when you need medical assistance, it doesn't matter what your bank account says, it doesn't matter what your insurance is, you gotta take the coverage, take the, you know, they'll work with you, but I think it's really important to say, you know, the city's very lucky to have this resource that we do at the price we do. And I can assure you personally that, um, a couple of years ago, I needed a rescue squad to bring me to Burlington Leahy, and they were very professional and quick. And, um, no one asked you what your credit score was or whether you could afford it. So I think it's important for us to keep that in mind as we approve this new policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
And, and if I may add, there, the policy does outline how people, um, of different income brackets can apply to be forgiven of the debt, and, and so that's, you know, if you read the policy, that's, that's all income i- included in that.
Counsel Grow?
Um, I, I'm gonna be supporting this because we have to do this, but I, I just can't help but say, this is another example where nationalized healthcare, universal healthcare would eliminate the need for anybody to worry about checking their bankbook or anyone qualifying for coverage, that you would be able to be taken to the, the hospital or the emergency room regardless, because it would be covered under what we should be doing like every other civilized Western nation in the, in the world is doing, and that is providing nationalized healthcare for their, their people. And it's ridiculous that we constantly have this conversation about ambulance fees that are costing thousands and thousands of dollars for a trip. I'm not begrudging, I know that that's what we have to deal with right now, but as a, as in terms of a, of a policy, you know, we have an obligation to speak about it at the local level, we have obligation to speak about it at the state level, and we sure as hell have an obligation to speak at it at the federal, federal level. We are living in a, in a backwater healthcare system this, in this way, and this is just one symbol of it.
Any further discussion, Councillors? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthy?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Roger and Lee.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Final order of business, Counsel Gross?
Um, on a motion by Counsel Gross and seconded by Counsel Worthy, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council authorize the write-off of five hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and two cents in uncollectible outstanding ambulance billing. Um, this, this-
Are you gonna move it?
I ISO move, sorry.
Second. Um, Counsel Gross moved it and Counsel Worthy seconded it. Um, narrative, Counsel Gross?
This, this spans from, uh, January one, twenty twenty, to June, um, twenty-six of twenty twenty-one, so it's an eighteen-month period. There is, in our packet or in the BNF packet, there was a whole list of pages of the reasons for this, uh, many are, the patients are unknown, many, i- it's quite surprising on the range of, of coverage that private um, industry pays or Medicare pays, you know, it goes from they pay eighty percent to they pay ten percent of these bills, and then the people are stuck with them. It, it's, and usually the people who are, are stuck with, that have the higher, you know, the percentage, uh, that's on their own, um, pocketbook, are the people who have, you know, catastrophic um, lower front, front end, and so they're usually the, the lower income bracket of, of people who are just because it's mandated in Massachusetts to have their healthcare, they have catastrophic healthcare. And, and these sort of services are not really covered under their healthcare. So this is, then, I mean, we've seen this before. We will see this again, um. It's part of taking care of our own. And that's about all I got to say. You know, you can go through the multiple pages of, of the data to see what, um, you know, the breakdowns of, of where this debt comes from, but it's uncollectible, they tried to collect it. They use an agency, the policy outlines what, everything that they've done to try to find, to collect this money, and it has been uncollectible at this point.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Grow?
Um, chapter two of my little monologue here, this is almost six hundred thousand dollars of tax dollars that is going to just be written off because the health industry in this country and the, the way that we manage healthcare means that people of, you know, if you're on Medicare, if you're on, if you're indigent, you're gonna get, you're gonna get taken care of. If you're wealthy, you're gonna get taken care of. If you're middle class, if you're working class in this, in this country, this kind of, this cost alone can be devastating. Just simply taking so- someone to, to the hospital in an ambulance can be financially devastating. And when people say, oh, I can't stand the idea of having nationalized health insurance, or I can't stand-
Point of order.
Yeah, Counsel Grow, I, I have to agree with Counsel O'Hara. You're a little bit of, you're a little bit out of order.
Please.
Let's, let's stick with, with this matter.
We're talking about five hundred sixty thousand dollars, or five hundred ninety thousand dollars of, of taxpayer dollars. Certainly, certain councillors are always concerned about how taxpayers' dollars are spent, Counsel, uh, O'Hara.
No, 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 Counsel Grow.
No, no, we don't.
I agree with you.
We are spending-
This is the place.
This, we just feel like that this is out of order, just because we're going down a different path than what we're trying to approve right now.
Yeah, you're writing off six hundred thousand dollars of tax-
Would someone like to appeal the ruling of the Chair?
Nah, forget it. The point's been made.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Um, so, um, I think we are ready for the vote on this unless there's any further discussion. Seeing none? We are ready for a roll call vote, Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthy?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
No.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes, but I second Jason.
Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
I have to support my, my fellow councillor, no.
You.
Huh, you guys are great. I can't figure you out sometimes, okay? Um, so the motion passes, seven in favor, zero opposed, um, O'Hara and um, Gross. Uh, Grow, I'm sorry, Grow, uh, and O'Hara.
We, we also, Madam President, we also had a presentation by the library as, as directed by the council to come to be enough.
Right. And are you able to, um, present those slides, um, the, the five fundraising slides that they, um, shared with us?
Am I?
Or Joanne, do you have them by any chance?
No, I don't, because I, it was, there was no vote taken, so I would-
Okay.
It was no-
Okay, so we talked a little bit about, um, so Councillors, to Counsel Gross's point, um, we brought this up because as a condition to the loan order that the city made um, last fall, um, we said that after six months, we wanted to ask the Soyafree Library Board and Executive Director to come back to us at BNF and give us an update of where the fundraising stood, just as a check and balance, and we put that in our conditions. So that is what we did at the meeting last week. It was very helpful. And what I would suggest that you all do is go back and watch the Zoom meeting and, and read the minutes so you understand and can see the slides. And then they're gonna come back to us in November um, to give us, um, a full presentation at the City Council um, level, just so we can all see that as the conclusion of our two-year tenure will be coming to a close as part of the conditions that we've set forward for them.
No, I'm surprised, I could give a little, um, synopsis.
Please do, because I think it's timely with all the signs going up all over the city, so, thank you.
So, um, we're well aware, you know, that it went before, um, planning and development last week, uh, that was their latest, uh, permit, then that'll come before us on a public hearing. And, uh, they hope to have a building permit, um, soon. They talked about their construction timeline, um, of which they plan to be finished by June of twenty twenty-five. They hope to break ground, or they, um, on June fourteenth, they are having, the bids are going out. And they hope to have a groundbreaking in October. Uh, that is, is their timeline for those two milestones. They, uh- They also came to us about the latest of their fundraising. And they have, since we talked to them last, they've increased their committed funding by one point two million to sixteen point, to sixteen point four million now. And they also have some very good prospects on a federal program to bring in three million. And then also the, the Mass Library, Mass Board of Library Commission is also a grant for two point eight million dollars. So they are now, at this point right now, they're, the delta between the twenty-nine million and what they have in the queue is six point seven five million, so it's considerably lower than it was before, and they are planning to aggressively fundraise throughout this summer season. That was what they reported out. So their financials came in better than they had hoped. That was encouraging. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'll start with Council Worthley because he is on BNF.
Thank you. I think you-
Council Memard, you are the chair of BNF, but you were not there, so I'm going to ask Council Worthley to speak first.
Thank you. I think both Council Gilman and Gross summed it up very well. But I think there's an underlying message that would just be really helpful to be clear about. When we approved the loan authorization, the library signed a memorandum of understanding saying they're going to commit to paying every penny back, including the interest, and they are seventy-five percent of the way through their fundraising objective. That's remarkable at this point to say they're that close this early in the project. So I think that we should just keep the encouragement high, feel good about that, but also keep talking about it. I'm very optimistic that they're going to come through with the rest as they promised, so let's just be hopeful. And obviously, if they don't, we have to have a conversation about what that means, but I still think we should be seventy-five percent of the way through the fundraising this early in is a good sign, so I'm optimistic.
Thank you, Council. Council Memard.
I just wanted to add that the library president, Murn Sibley, and Jenny Benedict indicated, and it was shown in their slides as well, that the two point nine, I think it is, million additional that's anticipated for Mass Board of Library Commissioners is a reflection of a request to index the grant approval from four or five years ago up to current cost levels based on inflation and other indexes. So that was requested, it started out in the town of Amherst regarding their library project, but that's a very encouraging sign of support from the state and from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners to index their original award to adjust for inflation.
Thank you. Any further questions on this matter, councilors? Seeing none, thank you for the committee report, Council Gross, and-
And I'll remember to move them next time.
It's okay. You did great. So next order of business, Madam Clark.
The ordinance and administration standing committee report of May fifteenth.
Council Nolan.
We have no items under this heading.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of May seventeenth.
Council Grow.
Thank you very much. A number of items of public interest I think that are worth mentioning. We took care of three applications for summer events coming up, and I just want to repeat them here so that the public has awareness that they're coming. The first one was the Harbor Loop Summer Concert Series that will begin on July thirteenth and run every Thursday through August thirty-first at Harbor Loop, obviously, from five to nine P M. So head down there for some music. There are rain dates on September fourteenth and September seventh, should there be any days that they can't perform. So that's one event. The second event that we approved was the street closings for the Fishtown Horribles Parade, which is of course July third, two thousand twenty-three, starting at the high school as it always does. And that would be from six to nine P M. So that's July third, two thousand twenty-three. And an appeal was made for contributions. If you feel that the Horribles Parade reflects a worthy activity, please consider giving some money for them so that they can continue this annual tradition. And then the third was the brand-new Magnolia Block Party that is going to be taken on this year on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, July twenty-second, and August nineteenth along Lexington Avenue with the rain date of July twenty-ninth and August twenty-sixth. Those will be block parties like we have in the Main Street, and that's coming up once a month in June, July, and August. We also had a continuing discussion about the state of the affordable housing obligations of the one sixteen East Main Street developer. That has been continued until June twenty-first P and D meeting, so if you're interested in following that, that's the next time that that will be up for discussion. And we had a vote on a height petition by the library, and that will be coming to a public hearing. I didn't make a note of that, so I'm not sure, Joanne, when's the public hearing for the library? Special counsel permit with their height exception, do we know?
I believe that's going to be June twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, great. Yeah, so if that's of interest to you, then you want to tune in on July twenty, June twenty-seventh for the public hearing on the height, the height special permit, and that's it.
Great. Thank you, Council Grow. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
Council Grow, did you want to mention that there's-
Yes, thank you. Yes, you just did it. Yeah, there will be no P and D on June seventh. That P and D has been canceled, so there will be nothing on Wednesday, June seventh. And that's it.
Great, thank you.
All right, the next item is the first scheduled public hearing, public hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-six, rezoning twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two, Madison Avenue number thirty-six, map thirty-nine, lot forty-one, from E B extensive business to our five high-density residential.
Like to open the public hearing and continue it to June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
Public hearing twenty twenty-three zero two five, special city council permit twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four, modification of special city council permit two thousand nineteen dash zero zero six, East Main Street number one sixteen, map fifty-nine, lot fifty-three, loss of zoning ordinance, section five point eleven, inclusionary housing requirements, subsection four, basic requirements to pay a fee in lieu of required affordable housing unit in the N B district.
Like to open that public hearing and continue that to June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
Is- Public hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero two seven, to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-two, traffic and motor vehicles, section twenty-two dash two seventy-one, prohibited parking from May first to September fifteenth, generally, excuse me, by deleting Rocky Neck Avenue, Easterly Side, beginning at a point one hundred and thirty-seven feet from its intersection with Horton Street for a distance of one hundred and eighty-one feet in the northerly direction, and amend section twenty-two dash two eighty-four, service of loading zones by adding to the existing loading zone, Rocky Neck Avenue, Easterly Side from a point fifty-one feet opposite the northerly entrance to the Sumac Lane in a southwesterly direction for a distance of forty-eight feet, adding from the hours of six A M to six P M.
I would like to open up the public hearing and ask for anybody that would like to speak in favor. Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Madam Clark, are there any correspondences?
There are no correspondences.
Councilors, are there any questions? Council Grow.
I'm going to confess to not, having spent a huge amount of time thinking about this, can I ask who initiated this order?
Council Memard.
Okay, Scott, can I direct a question to the chair? I'm a little confused about what the ramifications of this are. I'm seeing that we're going to be deleting no parking along, stretch down by the restaurants, correct? And adding a loading zone, what happens in the hours of six P M to six A M in terms of parking along that stretch? In response to your question, councillor, this was submitted at the request of the new management team at the Rutter Restaurant, which, as you know, has been inactive for a few years, and they're back up in business, as best I know. The manager of the restaurant, who'd been employed by Barbara Lynch, her name is Nora McKenna, reached out to me to make arrangements so that there was provision for a loading zone for use by the restaurant to take deliveries in an area that's currently marked no parking. And at the suggestion of the Traffic Commissioner, some back and forth, we agreed to make it a loading zone similar to what we had over for the D E S Club that is not twenty-four hours, it's just during normal working hours when they would expect deliveries, and otherwise, otherwise, I'm not sure if it changes. It's where we're designating a loading zone between six and six. Right, but does it allow parking after six P M? It's, as far as I know, and I'm not sure, the review that was in the discussion of the subcommittee, whether that's silent on that.
Council Nolan. On the question, we're not deliberating right now, on the question.
Yeah, on the question, it changed it from no parking from six A M to six P M, loading zone where deliveries can be had. The no parking at night and all the other restrictions remain intact because of the areas of concern for safety and parking in corners.
That would make sense to me as well.
Thank you. So follow-up question on that, so there would just be double signs, the signs for the loading zone during the day until six? And then after that, there's similar signage that just says no parking? Is that correct? Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, and that was reviewed through the Traffic Commission?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Any further questions, councilors? Part of the public hearing, we were asking questions. No, seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Council Nolan.
All righty, so on a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council O'Hara, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council amend Gloucester Codes of Ordinances, chapter twenty-two, as follows. Amend section twenty-two dash two seven one, parking prohibited from May first to September fifteenth, generally by deleting Rocky Neck Avenue, Easterly Side, beginning at the point of one hundred and thirty-seven feet from its intersection with Horton Street for a distance of one hundred and eighty-one feet in a northerly direction, and amend section twenty-two dash two eighty-four, service of loading zones by adding to the existing loading zone, Rocky Neck Avenue, Easterly Side, from a point of fifty-eight feet opposite the northerly entrance of Sumac Lane to the southwesterly direction for a distance of forty feet, adding from the hours of six A M to six P M. And I so move.
Second, motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Gilman. Is there a narrative, Council Nolan?
From what I'm gathering from the request and from traffic and Council Memard is this is alleviating some of the stress of being able to get deliveries to a business without disrupting the neighborhood during the nighttime and peak hours of traffic and neighborhood enjoyment. I think this is just a win-win for the neighborhood and for the businesses.
Thank you, councillor. Councilor's, time for our, oh, did I close the public hearing? I did.
Yeah.
Okay, you heard me hit the gavel, Joanne?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking, so I'm good. So for the discussion, councilors, on the motion. Seeing none, a roll call vote, Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes, good job, Scott.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
Next order of business, public hearing twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-one, street sidewalks and other public places, section twenty-one dash one, prerequisite to acceptance of ways.
I'd like to open up the public hearing and ask our C A O if she would like to speak on this matter, on actually the three different matters that are in front of us.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the councilors. I apologize, there's two of me because I'm using my phone for sound and my computer for the picture. I just, the mayor asked me to come on his behalf tonight and just say, thank you, number one, to the working group that these recommendations came from, the private roads working group, which was something that implemented very quickly upon taking office in January twenty twenty-two. Council Gilman and Suzanne Egan, our general counsel, put a lot of time, as well as the members, the private residents of our community. We did sit and we did listen to the residents of our community who've been, who live on private roads or have been part of this process and are facing challenges still. And these three orders came from that working group. We are looking forward, the mayor's looking forward to seeing what comes out of your deliberations tonight and is committed to whatever can make, we can do to make the experience of our residents on private roads more palatable. We understand it's a difficult situation, but each step we take is very important. So we look forward to seeing what happens with these three orders tonight, and thank you so much to everyone who was involved. And Suzanne Egan is here for questions, as she's the one who worked with that working group, and since they're all legislative, she can help answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak in favor of these, this particular council order? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, are there any correspondences, Madam Clark?
There are no communications, no.
Are there any questions, councilors? Council Worthley.
Thank you. So I think we all know this is a complicated issue. I think the newspaper called it a quagmire.
Council, ask a question right now. It's not the deliberations. If you would do that, it would be great.
I was getting to it, literally, didn't really, I just said it's a challenging issue, sorry.
Okay.
So I asked, I asked some questions last month when this came up, and I think Council Gilman, you'd said that we'd have a refer back to O and A and committee of the whole, and the goal would be to have Suzanne Egan there, where she was, and Mike Hale, and he was not able to be part of that, or I'm not sure whether he's able or not, he wasn't there. So then O and A made the recommendations, and then Mike isn't here tonight either, but I don't know that he's expected to be here, and he has a long day. I think today's his day off. But I asked a few questions of him, and I think it was your advice to actually write questions to him, and I did, and he replied. So I don't know how you want to handle this as terms of the question, his response, I can read both, but I'd like to at least ask my questions and get his response. but I'd like to at least ask my questions and get his responses on the record, if that's all right.
Okay, so why don't I read the questions if, and that, that you submitted and in with his answer? So the first question, go ahead.
I was thinking that I could read my own questions, but if you want to read them, I'm not gonna.
Counsel Worthy, you have the floor. You may read your question and you may answer it. The floor is yours.
Well, I'm not saying I'm gonna answer, I'm gonna read Mike's answer, so.
It's fine, you can do it.
And I asked this at the tree level, but we didn't have Mike there to answer it. So, I wanted to ask the question, do the proposed changes, as we've read these again, give them any more funds to maintain private roads? His reply was, the proposal as drafted does not increase the funding. I asked the second question was, do you, do the proposed changes provide you with any more staff to maintain private roads? Proposal as drafted does not increase staffing. Thirdly, my question, do the proposed changes give you any more statutory authority to spend money on private road maintenance? His answer, the proposal does not change the state law for spending public funds in private ways. Fourthly, the proposed changes incent or encourage any additional projects that would be bettered? He said the response is a little more than just yes or no. I do not see the proposed changes increasing any desires, any group's desire for private paving betterment. That ordinance is in place and has been been for many years, and a handful have taken advantage of that. I asked this question, do these changes bring clarity, as has been stated, to how you, he can prioritize pothole repair? This, I think, is the important one for me. To the contrary, I believe the subjective nature of the proposed amendments will lend itself to confusion, not clarity. And then I ask, for people who live on the private roads that fall into these categories, should they expect that these roads will now be maintained any more than they should have been expecting that, sorry, I forgot that word, before this ordinance change? Under that state law, maintenance of private ways is prohibited from public funding. This proposal does not change state law. I think you say 90% of private ways will see zero benefit from these changes and possibly less services if the funding has to be prioritized according to the draft amendment, amendments. And then I drafted, I, hang on. Okay, you had taken out the last part about the one year, 100%, people have to sign up for the private, of a betterment if we did temporary roads, but because that take, was taken out, he agreed that this doesn't do that. That answers those questions, and so if Mike were here, I'd like, I think it's the assumption is that those were the answers he provided to us in email today, so.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further counselor questions as part of the public hearing? Counsel O'Hara?
Is Attorney Egan on the call?
She sure is.
Okay, could I ask Attorney Egan a question?
The floor is yours for a question, Counselor.
Thank you. Attorney Egan, it's been mentioned in, in oral communications, and, and we've gone back and forth on this, but Section 6N, which to me is, it's very brief, very few words, but my, not my interpretation, the way I understand it, is the, a city or town has the, it's legal to do repairs on private, private ways. It goes into much more detail, they also have the ability to put drainage on private ways. It notes that they can, the, a city or a town can, can assess a betterment if they so choose. Could I get your, is your comment related to 6N, please?
My comment with regard to 6N and the proposed ordinance amendment, is that what you're asking me for? So.
Just, just in, just just strictly 6N, again, it's very, as you know, it's extremely brief, but I think it's very clear on what a city or town can do.
So the only problem that I have with this, Counsel O'Hara, is that this, this particular order that we're looking at is specifically regarding taking a private road and converting it to a public. So this really isn't into the repair of, of private roads, this is really the process of which we are to take that. So I think your question might be more applicable to another matter that we will be having in a, in a subsequent public hearing tonight. So, just to stay true to what we're, what's in front of us, could you hold on that question?
That's fine, thank you.
That would be great, thank you. Any other questions, Counselors?
Could you put the, I'm sorry.
Counsel Grow?
Yeah, I, I won't talk about ambulance services or healthcare. I have actually asked Counsel Worthy to read Mike Hale's answer to the question that he took back, because I think his answer is relevant to the discussion in general, and I, I would hate to leave that out, but I think it bears repeating. It was the last question about betterments, but his response is actually not about betterments, but I think you should probably read that.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, are we? We're just talking about the last sentence, the reason why I.
We're talking about questions right now, we're not deliberating or explaining something, okay, just read the question.
Well, it actually isn't a question. I said, I wrote him, I attached the proposed change, in case he didn't have it, I'm sure he did. Last part about forcing better, people to better their private roads within one year of a temporary repair has been deleted after we raised some significant questions about enforceability and reasonableness. So it's not really a question, but then he comments, temporary repairs are not the same as maintenance, and as mentioned earlier, there is no additional funding or statutory reach on these changes. So Counsel Grow, I would be happy to see how that fits in.
I have another, another question, if I could.
Okay, you may ask a question.
I guess the question I would be, would be to, to Solicitor Egan. You know, I think that the intention of this was to put together some parameters which would facilitate the, the taking a public road, to taking a private roads that were in came, came with a certain set of, of conditions. Is, is there, I guess I'm asking to speculate. Is there, is one, does, does Mike Hale, our DPW director, support this change, but two, is this, are we, are we seeing a potential for much of anything happening from this, this legislation? I mean, it seems like it's a fairly uphill battle. Is this good ordinance? Is this good, good legislation, I guess is what I'm asking, and that's kind of a tough question for you to answer, because you, you put it together, but how, how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you feel this is gonna actually help the, the public process?
So I do think this is, you know, this does come out of the private work, private road working groups sort of dogged work on this issue, and they really looked at all of the issues, the practical issues of people living on private roads, the ability of the city to make the temporary repairs and/or permanent repairs, which it does not have that ability for a private road, and also the process of acceptance of a public way. So I think the ordinance really, or the proposed amendment really comes out is a product of a lot of good research and hard work from people, and the purpose of the ordinance is to provide clarity and to provide additional information, and also I think one of the purposes is sort of education, so people understand the process, put more information in the ordinance and clarify that process. And that's the intent of the ordinance.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm good.
Thank you. Any further questions, Counselors? Has anyone not spoken as a question that would like to speak? Counsel Worthy, you can ask a question.
Yes, Counsel O'Hara asked, was gonna ask a question about a different ordinance, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on which one we're voting on first. Is it possible to put the language on the screen? I don't mean to make this harder, but I just wanna make sure we're on the right, we, there's three different ones, make sure we're talking about the same one.
We can put the template on Counsel, Madam Clerk, is that possible?
If you give me a couple of minutes, I can pull that.
And while we do that, without objection, I know that I'm not supposed to do this, but there is a hand raised, it's by Bill Helmuth. He would like to speak on this. I knew he was gonna be on the call tonight, he was slow getting his hand up, but we're still in the public hearing. Does anybody object to me asking him to speak to us for up to three minutes? Bill, Joanne, if you could bring Bill in, that would be great. Bill, if you would introduce yourself and your address, and you can speak to the council on this order. Welcome, you are muted. Thank you, now you're not.
Okay, I'll slowly raise my hand because there wasn't anything to say until we got to this point.
Okay.
But I just wanted to address the prioritization, I think Jeff mentioned that Mike thought the prioritization didn't add anything, it just added confusion. But my, in my opinion, it adds more clarity, it's, it's it creates a scale or creates a grading process by which we evaluate each of the private roads and determine its need to be converted to public. It's based on a University of New Hampshire study down in Nantucket, and they developed an actual grading system, taking into account whether roads are connecting roads, whether they are feeder roads, whether they connect to public, public areas and things like that, which, and they get scored. So when it's time to convert private roads to public roads, you already have a grading system that says, you know, Beach Street is more important than Piranee Lane. You know, a dead-end street is not something that the public is gonna be passing and repassing through all the time, as opposed to Beach and Brightside and Apple Street, because those are easy routes to establish destinations. So the whole purpose of that is to establish that hierarchy, that grading system, so that when we do convert public to private, we have a scaling system to, to give it merit. The other thing I wanted to add is fixing, there's some discussion about temporary repairs, and it does say in the, in the GCO Articles 2182, it talks about temporary pothole repairs, but it does mention that fixing the subsurface and the surface is part of fixing a pothole, and if you go on Google and just say, how do you fix a pothole? Water? It goes through a procedure.
Yep, Bill, you're a little bit off topic, so. But I appreciate you, you're speaking to us. So is there anything else on this particular matter, Bill?
No, I, I don't have the, the talking points there, I just remember them from last time.
Okay, great, thank you so much for speaking to us. I see a couple more questions, so I'm gonna go Counsel Grow and then Counsel O'Neill for questions. The public hearing is still open for Counselors.
I've referred to Counsel O'Neill, she hasn't spoken yet, I can, I can wait.
I was just, thank you, thank you, Counsel. Thank you. I was just wondering Mr. Helmuth's address.
Oh, it's Juniper Road, I think it's nine, if I'm not mistaken. Is it not, oh, Sean says it's seven. Counsel Nolan just said seven, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Grow?
Okay, I, I would, I guess I would like another question to, to City Solicitor Egan. And I think it's by way of clarification, and I just wanna, if you can, if you can turn, tell me whether or not my characterization is accurate. This is not a, an ordinance that is going to mean that the city is going to repair roads to accept them as public. It means that if a road is brought into the condition where it is acceptable to public, to being taken public, that these are the parameters under which they would, they would be considered. That roads would still have to be bettered, repaired, and then applied for acceptance by the city before they're accepted. This isn't an automatic process, and it's certainly not one that is going to lead to the city paying to repave and completely redo a road that's not bettered to the residents. I just want to make sure that that's really clear, is that, am I correcting that?
Yes, yes, that, that is, that is exactly the intent of the ordinance currently, that the, the road will be brought into good repair, and typically, what, what we have been talking about, you know, sort of the conversation has been ongoing, is to bring a private road into good repairs, to the betterment process, as you know, there's also the ability or the option for people who own the private road to do that themselves, if they feel like that is more, you know, economical for them, but the road has to meet this particular standards before it can be considered as, for acceptance as a public way.
Thank you, I didn't want there to be any, any misunderstanding about the intent. Thank you.
Counsel Gross?
Where is that? I, I don't see that anywhere in the ordinances.
It's not in this particular ordinance, I don't believe, Suzanne. This is just the conversion, and we were just trying to add some qualifiers on this particular ordinance.
That would be a qualifier.
But it does say in the preamble. I mean, it, it, it reads to the preamble, doesn't it?
Joanne, do you have the, do you have this up while we're still asking questions? Could you screen share the this order, just so we can, we can see what it looks like?
So I believe that's in the, I don't have that language in front of me right now, I can look to see what.
Okay. Can, can everyone see this? Okay, so this is, this is what it currently. This is what we are visualizing. It starts off by saying, no way shall be accepted as public ways of the city unless the order for acceptance is accompanied by, and we are adding a petition signed by 100% of the abutters, petition which includes a number of abutting parcels on the road and the length of the road, in addition, the map geolocation of the road and A, and then the old order said, the old ordinance said, a statement in writing signed by the Director of Public Works, the mayor and the city auditor, stating that the sufficient funds are on hand and will be allocated for placing such way in a safe condition for travel by an adding and a statement as to how the road meets any or all of the following criteria. And we were adding a connector street between two public roads. We are adding roads leading to a place of interest as a community or recreational venue, facility, or multi-use commercial or recreational location. We are adding roads leading to public area to include playgrounds. You went a little bit fast for me, Joanne, can you just go back a line? Roads leading to a public area to include venues such as playgrounds, schools, public landings, hiking trails, or other similar areas open to the public. And we are adding, while we are deleting, we are deleting the fastest, the most effective thoroughfare for public safety vehicles to access other streets, and we're adding the latest thoroughfare for public safety vehicles to pass from station or substation during an emergency. And E, a road that has the capacity for installation of public utilities, and we are deleting the unanimous commitment of abutters to better the cost of installing public utilities simultaneous to the city's commitment to permanently pave the street. So that is this particular order, so Counselors, are we comfortable in that right now, in terms of any questions on this? Counsel Grow, you have your hand raised. Do you want us to keep this up there in case we need to look at it? Counsel Grow and then Counsel.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I apologize, I meant, I prepared to take.
Okay, Counsel Grow's hand is down. Counsel Worthy, your hand is up for a question.
Yes, so really just a point of clarification.
Yes, so really just a point of clarification. The vote before us tonight is not to delete those and replace with these. It is to add those, and the deletion is from the first proposed amendment. So those things that are crossed out are not part of the discussion for what we're voting on. We're not deleting something in the ordinance book. We're just adding these words. And we've changed through the committee reports and the meetings, we've changed what those things are as we go along.
That's correct. That's correct, because we've, we've, we've now discussed this for three different meetings. So you are correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Um, Counsel Grow, and then I have a question for Suzanne. Questions only. We're not deliberating.
Yeah, I I guess the question would be, um, Tony raised the point um, about whether or not this ordinance states this has to do that the public, that the road to be accepted, if it's going to be accepted, has to be brought to s- to uh, uh, a set of standards. Are we, is that something that we should be adding at this point into the language so that there's no uh, confusion about the intention of what we're trying to do here? And if so, yeah.
So I'll, I'll ask Suzanne, Suzanne, do you believe that that would be helpful to add here? And if so, um, would it be in the opening sent statement um, on this as Counsel Grow, um, Gross suggested?
So I think um, it's always helpful. So yeah, that's a policy question, right? Um, and so that is the, if that's more of a policy question to say that, that's something that you want to put into your ordinance, and what that does is that makes it a requirement for any acceptance of any public way. Um, and if that's something you want in it to clarify that that's a requirement, then yes, if you um, want to have that as a sort of more of a policy that's not bound by ordinance, then that wouldn't be appropriate. So it, that's really not a legal question, but more of a policy question consideration as to whether the council would like to include that in the code of ordinances. I mean, uh, um, you have the authority to do it, the legal authority to uh, uh, amend the ordinance or to create that condition in this ordinance.
Um, Counsel Nolan, your hand is raised on questions only.
I do believe we have something in ordinance of what is entailed on accepting a road and what the city's looking for. I'm not sure how we can combine this on that. Um. I don't want to discuss it, but if, if we're going to get into this type of matter, I think we may want to recommend to send this back to committee to add the language to it and work with the administration and the DPW to make sure that we get it right. I, I, I wouldn't want to add to that and, and just adverb. I think it needs to be more important than that.
Okay, um. So, um. I guess we can take this off the screen and get back to looking at each other. Thank you. Um, so. The public hearing remains open. Um, so we should, um, is there a motion to refer this back to O and A for a further discussion and, and keep the, the um, the public hearing open?
I would move that.
For clarification, yes.
Second.
Again.
Okay, Counsel Grow made the motion. Counsel Nolan seconded it. Is there a discussion, counselors? Um, Counsel Gross.
Um, I, I assume this is going to be a um, a lengthy discussion, considering, you know, the timeframe we're coming into for the DPW, because there's a whole lot of um, you know, criteria that if you're going to try to cover them all, it's road width, sidewalks, it's accepted. There's, there's so many different things that, that if we're going to dive in into it that deep, I don't know if um, you know, do you postpone the public hearing indefinitely or or what? That could be off base. I mean, maybe it can be done in a shorter timeframe, but I think there's a lot of things that need to be answered here.
But all those other ordinances are all, um, those are all different matters, like there's the ordinance on the forty foot and, and um, equivalency and, and all that language. That's, that's another whole ordinance. So I don't know if everything has to be, I'm deliberating, which I shouldn't be doing right now, so I'm sorry. Um, any, um, any, so we, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second to um, refer this back. Um, is there further discussion on that motion? Um, Counsel Worthy.
Thank you. On the motion to refer, um, I, I think we should take a step back and you know, the charter says very clearly, the mayor shall not legislate and the council shall not administer. So if the mayor wants to direct the DPW director to have a policy, why are we sending this back to O and A to create a policy that the mayor can just tell the DPW director how to administer? It just feels like, I appreciate that this might bring clarity, it might be helpful. But I don't think that the mayor says, let's look at the code of ordinances, decide if we're going to fill a pothole with DPW director. So if they're not here saying this is important, we want this specific change to help the DPW director do X, Y, Z, then I'll send it back to committee, but it just seems like a lot of time, and there's not one more road getting fixed, bettered, or paved, or whatever in the last, you know, private roads in the last year and a half. So I wonder why would we, we, what are we going to accomplish with this in the committee?
So I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable deliberating on this right now. I am, Counsel Nolan and I are the ones that um, submitted this. And right now, I'm, I'm sensing a need to deliberate, and that's not right if we're going to bring this back to subcommittee for further review. So I, I wish that um, that um, we do as this motion, I'm going to speak on the motion right now. I wish that we bring it back because there's a, there's a question that has come up, and I'd like to make sure that we get that addressed. And um, and not start judging whether we need this or not right now, because we are, we are, the public hearing is still open, and um, and, and we have not had the privilege of being able to um, get a committee report from O and A, and also for the order makers to um, to, to deliberate on why this is important right now. So I ask that you all be patient with that and um, and allow us to go back as um, Counsel Gross had, had suggested that we do. Are there any further questions on the motion? Um, seeing none, um, roll call vote. Counsel O'Neil.
I know, I, is it too late for me to ask a question?
Um, it's definitely out of order because we're now, we've, we're, we're at a motion where we're referring it back to um, subcommittee.
Okay, so I say no.
Okay, um, Counsel Worthy. Yes. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Um, the yeses have it, seven in favor, two opposed, um, O'Hara and O'Neil. Um. Madam Clerk, your hand is raised.
Okay, you're going to send this back to O and A. Um, when are you going to continue this public hearing too?
That's a very good question. Because I would say, Counsel Nolan, um, what is your um, so possibly the second week in June, the second meeting in June?
Okay, so we only have one O and A meeting in June, unless Counsel Nolan calls a special one, because June nineteenth is a, a holiday.
Okay.
So he could have a special meeting on June twentieth, if he, on the Tuesday.
Um, Counsel Nolan has his hand raised, so I'd like to hear from him.
I have no problem doing it on June twentieth, if the other members of the committee don't mind. I think this is important for us to take up.
Okay, so you're gonna have a meeting June fifth. And I'm not sure whether the matter would be resolved on June fifth, and if it's not resolved, it could go to a special meeting on June twentieth, O and A, correct? And then.
It is.
Okay, and.
I would like, I would like to request that we wait until June twentieth to cover that meeting, and then bring it back to this um, committee um, for that's, that June.
Twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh date for um, continuation of the public hearing. Is that, is that okay with you, Counsel Nolan? I, I, I'm not able to attend that meeting, that first meeting on, in June, just because of um,
Stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, we get it. I, I just need to know, I just want to make sure it's all right with Counsel Majota and Counsel O'Hara um, to add this, the, the uh, special meeting on the twentieth.
No objection.
I will, I have an appointment on June twentieth. I'm looking at my calendar right now, so I'm going to try to move that, um, so I'll be able to attend the June twentieth meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, guys.
Great, um, so I think we're clear um, on those dates. So thank you. Thank you, counselors, and thank you Suzanne for being here to answer our questions on this first public hearing. So um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is public hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero sixty to amend gloss to code of ordinances, chapter twenty-one, street sidewalks and other public places, section twenty-one dash eighty-one, permanent construction or repair.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak in favor.
Let me see. Before we do that, could we have that one up on the screen, just for a quick reference to which one this is of the three? Um. In order.
Alright, so let me just.
Thank you.
Oops. Try this again. It's public hearing number five.
Right there. Yep, you just scrolled by it. No, no, go back. Go back. Yeah. Nope, we're on one, th- this.
One number five. Public hearing, we just did one before that.
No, keep going.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, that's, no, no.
She was on the right one.
Which one?
Joanne was right.
It's.
Public hearing five.
It's public hearing number sixteen.
Yes.
Sixteen, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that one, right there. Er, stop. Okay.
Did you make an er now noise?
I did, I'm sorry. I sound like I'm doing Bob the Builder or something. Okay, um, so that's, that is the change. Um. It's just, it's the addition of that one statement. Okay.
Okay.
So, um, so members of the public, um, the public hearing is open. And is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the addition of that statement under this ordinance? Seeing none? Um, Madam Clerk, are there any correspondences or communications from the public?
Very none.
Okay, counselors, do you have any questions for counts, um, for our attorney Suzanne Egan on this?
That's good.
Hold on. Um, Counsel Worthy.
Thank you, um, thank you Suzanne for being here. Um, I'm aware that other cities and ta- some cities and towns do home rule petitions to allow them to use public money for private road repair. Um, and I've been, I've been seeing a couple examples of that lately. Um, if this council or a future council were to put a home rule petition together that the mayor signs off and sends it to the state to exempt ourselves from this provision, does the local ordinance now also stop us from doing this if that council were to do that?
So, so I would assume, or I would suggest that the best course of action to, would be that if the council was going to vote on special legislation that would allow um, the city to make permanent repairs on private ri- roads using public funds, then at the same time, you would consider um, amending this ordinance once if that special legislation was passed and accepted by the state. So you want to be consistent with any special legislation that um, was adopted by the state.
And just a follow-up question, if we did get that special legislation to allow for that, I'm not saying it's going to happen, or if this council, the next council are going to do that, if the council were to do that, would we, if we didn't change this ordinance with the, the local ordinance, stop us from doing it? Stop the mayor's office from doing it?
If we had special, so if we had special legislation, that, so this, so if the county, the city went to the legislature and said, can you make special legislation to allow us to do this? And we had
Which we have seen.
Home rule petition, and then we had a code, we had an ordinance that was inconsistent with what the city council and the mayor had asked to be done, then that would be an inconsistency, state law preempts, right? Local law, if it is specifically, if it's in direct contradiction. So it would be, but I would suggest that the city probably wouldn't get the, itself into that position, because that would be very inconsistent, right? So you would, so I would suggest that in all likelihood, logically, what the city council would do, and the mayor would do, would at the same time amend the code of ordinances. Because.
Thank you.
You've answered my question, thank you.
Any further questions, counselors? Let me just see whose hands are raised, because I'm.
Well, I'm sorry, I have one question.
Um.
I may.
Um, go ahead, Counsel Worthy, and then Counselor O'Neil.
Um, thank you. So, and I completely understand why this, this effort is happening. Um. Back in the nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties, the city paid for, contributed half towards betterment.
Counselor, this is not a discussion. We have not done the committee report. This is still a public hearing on questions.
So I'll ask a question, Counsel Gilman, then you will, Counsel Gilman, you will not understand my question with the background, without the background, but I will ask it and see how unhelpful it will be without any background. Everyone else gives a little preempt to what they're called, the preamble to their, their question, but from now on, I think you should also make sure nobody else, including yourself, does that. It, it's just really unfair that you just single me out. I say four words, nineteen eighty we did, and you stopped me. It's really, it's unprofessional.
Any member of this council can call me out on a point of order if they believe I'm doing what you just said. Okay? Oh, that's, well, it's all fair, because we're nine equal members of the council here.
I'd like to, I'd like to treat it equally, but nonetheless, my question simply is, if the city were to ever have the same policies had in the past, where at times we've contributed half of the money towards a betterment to incent people to get their roads fixed, or seventy-five, twenty-five percent, would this ordinance stop the city from being able to do that?
Is that a question for me?
Sounds like.
Counsel Gilman can decide that for me.
Oh, um, yes, so this ordinance is um, essentially what it does is it looks at the general law and what is sort of known, general law, state law, and says, we're adopting this as an ordinance and putting this adopting it, right? So then the city council would then not, it's, this is consistent with your last question, is whether you would take inconsistent actions, right? So if you adopt an ordinance that says, that acknowledges, no public funds can be used for permanent repairs to private roads, and then you adopt another ordinance that says, but we're going to contribute fifty percent of the funding for permanent repairs for private roads, those would be two very inconsistent actions, and I would suggest that the council would, would not do that, because that would be inconsistent. I would, I would assume they would be advised against doing that and um, not do that.
I also attribute that you're, what you're saying is, if this were to be put in place, any action to incent people using public fund, funds to, to um, give some crediting toward that, that would then become a greater burden because of this legislation.
I don't think I understand your question.
Okay, I'm just taking the inverse of what you're saying, that if we were to make that move, if a mayor or council would say, look, we've got some money. We've got a private roads account, which I know other cities and towns do. They take taxes from people who live on private roads and put into private roads maintenance fund, and they use that money to incent a betterment, maybe it's fifty percent or twenty five percent. If we were to move in that direction, then we'd have to undo this, or by doing this, it preempts us from moving in that direction. Is that a fair statement?
I I can't really answer that question because you're you're talking about something that other communities do that I'm not familiar with. I don't know what the process is that you're referring to. So I can't.
Gloucester has done it. Gloucester has done it. So you were attorney when we were doing it, so it's not unfamiliar, it's not.
I wasn't the city attorney in the eighties.
And then, okay, when we still had a policy for incenting betterment in the late nineties, early twenties.
Okay, are there any further questions, Council Worthy?
Lots, but we can go forward.
Okay, Council O'Neill, your hand was raised.
Yes, thank you. I'm just looking for clarification on Council Worthy's first question. Consistent with Mass, I'm reading the the amendment, consisting with Massachusetts general law, the city cannot make permanent repairs repairs to private roads using public funds. Um. The your first question, Council Worthy, was what?
My first question was if the if this council or a future council were to, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I ask it again?
Sure, you have the floor, Council Worthy.
No, Council Nolan, a Counselor O'Neill has the floor.
Okay.
Okay, so if this council or a future council or a future mayor says, we would like to use, I don't know, ARPA funds, for example, to incent people to work on their private roads, and we're going to contribute fifty percent or twenty five percent, like has been done in the past in this city of Gloucester, this ordinance would stop that effort. We even if we we couldn't even take private property owners' tax money and allocate it for private property private roads if we want to do like other cities do and repair these roads. So I don't know. Sorry, my question simply was if we were to make that move, does this make that impossible? And I think the answer was it would be inconsistent.
So the answer is yes.
I think this would handcuff a future council.
No, I I recall that 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 our general counsel said that if if we were to make any applications to home rule petition, that we could just amend this. It did. That's that was my understanding of your first question and the answer. Suzanne, is that correct?
Um, yes. So so the first question was if the council and the mayor went to the legislature and asked for a special legislation that allowed the city to spend, that would be special legislation, which is which would be an exception to the mass general law that's in place right now, say, make an exception just for the city of Gloucester and allow the city
Time out.
Make.
Council Worthy, our general counsel is explaining this right now.
No, she's not. She's editorializing about something that she's not we're not talking about. So I don't know why.
Hence to what you're saying, let the general counsel continue with her comment. Thank you. You have the floor, Suzanne.
So I'm I'm trying to address Counselor O'Neill's question about what your question. So Counselor O'Neill, if I'm not addressing your question, then you can you can let me know and I can stop. I'm perfectly happy doing that. What I was what I was trying to do was answer your question as to what my response, what I what question I was answering, and whether there's a if there's a the city gets a special exception from the state legislature through special legislation that says, City of Gloucester, you can spend, right, public funds for the repair of private roads, then that is the state law. We would have an exception from that. So at the same time, I suggested that it would be inconsistent or essentially illogical for the city to continue on having a ordinance which barred us to do that. So we would make an amendment to that to make it consistent with the action that we're asking the state legislature to take.
So the answer is yes, that would stop the city of Gloucester from making repairs to private roads.
That's what this proposed the proposed amendment. So the city already cannot do that. They can't use public funds. And so what this is doing is essentially codifying that because and I can it might help to explain why this came out of the private working group because we spent a a lot of time, essentially, the private working groups, the people who live on the private roads, myself, Counselor Gilman, and I believe Counselor Memhart attended sometimes. We spent a lot of time looking at this question and and trying to figure it out. And and all the questions were, can we the city do this? Can the city do this? And so we did the legal research and we did the sort of examination into whether or not we could. And we determined that one of the most important things to do is to provide the education and the knowledge to people so that this ordinance amendment does that. It puts it clearly, it codifies that language for the city of Gloucester, and it clearly states what the general law is. And that's the intent of this particular amendment.
Any further questions, councilors? Counselor O'Hara?
Thank you. Attorney Egan. I'm gonna look reference six N again. Is the city allowed to do temporary repairs on private ways?
Yes, and now I understand your earlier question. Counselor O'Hara, as to what it was in reference to. So I believe what you're referring to is we at a the committee of the whole in this O and A committee, we had a discussion on chapter forty, section six N, and what that allowed the city to do. And that is a statute which does allow the city to make temporary repairs on private ways. And it and it allows it allows the city to adopt an ordinance to do that. And that's what the city has in place currently.
Okay, I'm going to ask the question again, and it's pretty much a yes or no question. Is the city allowed to make temporary repairs on private ways?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, can I can I?
Follow up question.
Can I just add a little bit to that? The city is allowed to do that because it has adopted an ordinance which allows it to do it.
Terrific. Okay, a second question. What constitutes a temporary repair?
So I believe that you also had this conversation at O and A. So we know that it's not a permanent repair, right? So it's we know it's not something that will that sort of is required to have the road be able to be used to the fullest extent, right? And we know that it's not something that you would do that would be to maintain the road. And so typically, what a temporary repair is, what we've determined it is, is a filling of potholes and making those repairs that don't require an overall sort of redoing of the road, and it's also not work that maintains a road.
Okay. Does that what you just explained? Is that written any place in state law?
I don't believe that is. And I I believe that this question was referenced by, I believe it had this conversation with Mike Hale at O and A committee meeting. And I think that's that this is more less than a legal question. It's more of a engineering question.
Well.
It but but to question. Eight N is all covered in our existing ordinance. We we discussed that at our last B and F meeting, and we and I'm sorry, O and A meeting. And we went and we went through that that ordinance.
Right, because what the what the what the law does, it allows you to determine what types of temporary repairs you're going to make. You can't make a permanent, you can't do make, you can't maintain private roads, and you can't make permanent repairs. But it gives you the ability, and the city has taken that opportunity in the ordinance to say, this is what we'll do essentially. And that's what your discussion was at O and A, and we can refer back to that if you would like me to.
Counsel, is there anyone else that has questions on this way while General Counsel checks into that? Counsel Gross and then Counsel O'Neill.
Can I can I answer that question for Counsel O'Neill? I mean, for Counsel O'Hara?
And I I have it also. We can read the read this.
It's the it's in the ordinance that Counsel O'Hara voted for in two thousand seventeen.
Right, that's.
Section twenty one eighty two, temporary.
And we reviewed that at the last meeting.
Would you like me to read that? I have it up.
Yeah, would you?
Okay.
Great.
Section twenty one dash eighty two, temporary repair A states, a temporary repair shall include the filling of potholes in the subsurface of private ways and repairs to the surface materials, but shall not include significant excavation regarding drainage work or the resurfacing thereof. Yeah, and that's A, that's essentially the description of what a temporary repair is. And then B and C go on to discuss sort of the nature of the temporary repair, which I can also read if that would be helpful.
Go ahead.
Okay, so B, temporary repair may be performed by the city upon the determination of the Director of Public Works that the condition of the way adversely affects the safety of the inhabitants and that repair of the permanent nature is unnecessary to cure the condition. Or upon a determination that the condition of the way constitutes an emergency which requires immediate repair in order to protect the health or safety of the inhabitants of the city. C, such temporary repair shall not be considered as maintenance of the private way, nor shall the way be considered a public way as a result of any repair. And that is twenty one dash eighty two.
Does that answer your questions, Counsel O'Hara?
Uh, no, she Counsel Egan answered the question. I I asked a question in regards to what Mass law states for temporary pair. And I believe the answer is it does not dictate what a temporary pair is. Our city ordinance goes beyond state law and gives verbiage of what a temporary repair is. I think that's what we've we've gotten out of this conversation between Counselor Gross, Counsel Egan, that again, our ordinance supersede or or goes beyond the the verbiage within Section six N of Massachusetts general law.
So I I can help on that one. So chapter forty, section six N states, cities and towns made by ordinance provide for making of temporary repairs on private ways. Such ordinance shall determine, this is what our ordinance does, right, the type and extent of repair. So we have to make that determination. It's a policy decision that the city of Gloucester has made and has codified that in section twenty one dash eighty two. So that's A, the type and extent of repair. B, if drainage shall be included, right? We also have that decision made in our Code of Ordinances. So that's a requirement of state law. And C, if the repairs are required by public necessity, we made that determination. D, the number and percentage of butters who must petition for such repairs, and if betterment charges shall be assessed, and the liability limit of the city or town on account of damages of such repairs. And if the way shall have been open to public use for a term of years, and if a cash deposit shall be required for said repairs. So those are a couple of the things that in chapter forty, section six N, with regard to what a temporary repair is, that's a a decision of the city council that has to be made in order to make those repairs and that we've done and codified.
And the other questions, councilors?
I believe Counsel Grow has his hand up.
Counsel Grow, the floor.
Thank you. Quickly, I have two questions, one for Counsel Egan. So essentially, six N is an enabling statute that gives communities the ability to craft ordinances that fit the definitions that they need they need for their community. So it's not they're not defining for the the state's not defining those things for us. They're they're saying that we can make those definitions within a set of parameters. Is that is that is that fair? Okay, so it's not that six N dictates whether or not repairs can be made. It's six N dictates that we can make those determinations about what can and can't be repaired and how it's done. Is that fair?
That is correct. Yeah.
Secondly, I if I could, to the chair to Counsel Worthy, you you mentioned that several communities that you know have have enabled have have special legislation. Can you cite those for us? I'm always a little dubious when you know, without actual labels. So which communities do you know that have got special legislation that allows private permanent repair of roads with public funds?
Sure, do the chair if she allows that.
Go ahead, Counsel Worthy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So no need to be dubious, Counsel Grow. Let me allay your fears. I received information just today, actually, from Bruce Tar's office telling me that Barcible is the most recent one. Barcible, by the way, is on the list of the cities who have more private roads than Gloucester. There's only six of them. And they allow home rule petition as of two thousand eighteen to allow them to use private road, public money for private roads. And what they actually do is they have their private road maintenance fund contributed to by the taxes that come from people on private roads. So they found a way to do it. And it's not, you know, once in a lifetime. And apparently, there's a number of others. I don't have all the others, but I've been told there are a number of others, and I'm getting that information to try to be helpful to solving this problem. So I hope that.
Appreciate that. Good. I'm good.
Any further questions, councilors? I do see a hand raised, and I've been told that I'm too lenient with with asking people to speak after the close of the public comments. If any of you would like me to do that, please state now that you would like me to do that.
To allow to someone to speak?
Yes. Yes.
If you allowed one person the last hearing, it's only reasonable to allow one.
So I'm without objections, councilors, Jane Fox Dobson, if you would speak to this particular order, you're you're late in the public hearing, but we're going to allow you to speak. So your name and address, and you have three minutes to to tell us about this statement in this order that we'd like to put in.
Thank you. I'm sorry I I I came in late, but I had a question regarding this. I I'm sorry. I just want to say I get very confused when city council, I feel like we go around in circles, and it's very confusing to the public. I'm getting confused on what's a permanent repair, what's a temporary repair, when you can do something, when you can't do something. It's just not clear, and I really don't think we're being fair to our audience. Or is it just me? I'm I just don't understand it. For example, Becker Circle, Becker Lane.
Jane, you you're definitely getting off topic right now. We're just, what we're trying to do right now is establish the need to put in our existing order a a statement that says, consistent with Massachusetts general law, the city cannot make permanent repairs to private roads using public funds. And that's and that's all that's in front of us right now with this public hearing.
Okay, but what's a permanent repair? But that that's the point, you know, there's no differentiation between a permanent repair and a temporary repair.
So it's in our it's in it's in our existing ordinance, and I'd ask that you reach out to your ward counselor tomorrow, and you can they can go through the ordinance with you and explain it to you. It is a lot to digest. There's a lot of different, I mean, this has been something that has been a top priority for several of our councilors who have been on the council for eight years. We we've been living this because it's a big issue in our city and and you know, it's 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 our constituents are all concerned about this, and we've been really trying to learn as much as we can. It's confusing. So I I'd suggest that you reach out to your ward counselor tomorrow. If unless you have anything else to add on this one matter that we're discussing in the public hearing right now. Matter that we're discussing in the public hearing right now.
Well, I'll ask one question. The city put in public, private water lines at Overlook Avenue. Is that a permanent repair?
Jane, this is, this is off topic. So if, if you want to come and speak in normal oral communications. I under, I understand it is. And I appreciate you being on the call. So thank you. Okay, um, so, um, I think we've exhausted this conversation. So we've, we've had an opportunity. Um, for questions and, um, and I'm going to close the public hearing. And ask for the committee report from Counsel Nolan.
What a motion by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Ms. Yoda. The ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, two in favor. One opposed O'Hara to recommend the city council amend. GCO Chapel twenty-one, street sidewalks and other public places. Article four, repair of private ways, section twenty-one dash eighty-one, permanent construction or repair. By adding as follows. Consistent with Massachusetts general law, MGL, the city cannot make permanent repairs. To private road using public funds. And I so move.
A motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Grouse. Is there a narrative, Counsel Nolan?
Um, basically, I mean, we've, we've heard all, all sides of this in just a little bit, but the bottom line is that. All we're doing is, is codifying our ordinance to say that it is against the law for us at this point. To use, uh, public money for permanent repairs on private roads using public funds. It's just pointing out that's the law at this time. And, you know, we have avenues to look into different things, but. Right now, this is the law that, that we apply by. And we're just putting it in the language. It doesn't mean it can't change. It doesn't mean something isn't gonna come up. Um, it's a hot topic. And things are moving every day on this, but this is basically just putting us consistent with the MGL. Which is just that. We're just being consistent with the Mass General Law.
Thank you, Counselor. And, and because I co-authored this, authored this, um, order, order with Counsel Nolan. I'd just like to speak on this and then we'll open it up for others for discussion. Um, but, you know, th- this statement is just. Um, putting into our ordinance, um, the current law. And we already have a very thorough ordinance. That describes. Temporary repairs to private roads. And that is in our current ordinance. So this is just a reminder of the law. It's just to be clear with the public because this is a common issue. This is where we begin every conversation. And, um, and, and if, and if we have, um, the success at some point to do more. Um, we will certainly do this, but everything that we do for our roads right now comes with a cost to the city. And, um, and we need funding. And I think you heard that, um, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year for our public roads only. Only paves one mile of public roads. And, um, and, and this is all a conundrum for municipalities right now. So, um, I'm, I'm in support of. This one statement. I don't think it's a big deal. And I hope my fellow counselors support this. Um, I think I saw Counsel Grow with his hand raised first and then Memart and then Worthley in that order.
I'm going to support this, uh, because I, I, I think that it does bring clarity. I think the, the issue that we're, we're dealing with. Uh, if I can, if I can say this, that we've had decades and generations of things that have been done sloppily. That have not followed necessarily proper process, proper law, you know, things have, have slid through the cracks. They've been, they've been done because they've been done. And as a consequence, we are dealing now with, with. Decades of, of problems that have been built on the fact that people have come to expect that certain things will be done. And we can no longer continue on that route. We can't afford it. The, 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 the city can't afford to, to maintain the things that, that were, were vested to re, to, uh, repair. And, and maintain, much less take on the obligations that have been sort of allowed to happen over the years. And I, you know, again, I live on a private road. I, I understand the, 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 the complexity and the, and the difficulty of having to deal with. Poor decisions of the past, but this gives us, at least unless we, we find a way to change it and, and produce a, a method of paying for these things. Otherwise, with clarity, we can say this matches state law. It is our law. That gives clarity. And I think that it's not necessarily going to make people happy, but we need to, we need to begin to clean up. Mistakes of the past and that's our responsibility. So I'm supporting this.
Thank you, Counsel Grow, Counsel Memart, and then Counsel Worthley.
I also will be supporting this. And I think that it was a strong recommendation out of the mayor's. Private Road Task Force Group to try, I mean, one of the, one of the biggest challenges we have is, is simply communicating and educating. To our citizenry, the reality is that we as counselors and the administration. Try to solve their problems within. And people have, as Jason just said, based on prior precedent. False expectation that their private roads will somehow be taken care of regardless of what resources are available. Or what, uh, the law states. So again, until such time as we can find other resources to address. These private road problems, it's just a helpful educational tool for us to know and be able to point our finger to that, that here it is in our ordinance. We can't use public funds to solve private property problems. And therefore, this makes sense.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes, thank you. So, and I think this will be true for the next one too, so I don't need to do it twice. Um, people are struggling. Don't make any mistake about that. Our roads are incredibly, in, in incredible disrepair. Our residents' vehicles are being damaged every single day driving on private roads and some public roads that are in rough shape. And that includes our police cars, our fire apparatus, our rescue squads, our ambulance, our school buses. And so we're talking about costs. There's a cost to not doing this the right way, okay? And saying to people who are just struggling to get by, you're on your own, okay? Now, I don't have a magic answer for this. But I feel very strongly this is going in the wrong direction. In August of two thousand twenty-one, I presented a plan to Mike Hale in a meeting he, we had in his office. And that plan, he said, was the most well thought out, workable plan to get more roads paved in Gloucester, including private roads. The most well thought out, workable plan. And so I said, okay, well, when I, if I get elected, I'm going to start working on this. I don't have the complete answer. Okay, I met with the mayor's office, January sixth of two thousand twenty-two. We all just started. And he said he's going to put a group together to work on this. And I said, I'd like to be part of that group. He said, well, that's going to be up to Council President Gilman. So I asked.
Worthley, you've already discussed this at a prior meeting. You've already said all of this.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess I can't say something at the full council meeting.
It was a full council meeting that we did, but go ahead. You can, you can trash me again. You, you have the floor. Go ahead.
I didn't trash you. She's overly sensitive to.
Okay, okay. Gilman made the decision and I didn't support you, but go ahead, continue, Counselor. Go ahead. It's okay. Go ahead.
Point of order. It's not trashing.
Uh, Counsel, can we please just make our points? Wanting to get information, we're going around here, um, enough with, if I'm out of line, some call pointer, enough with the egos. And let's get to the point, please. If I'm wrong, then point of order me, I'm sorry, but let's.
There's no ego in my conversation. This is trying to solve problems for residents. That's what I'm trying to do. I think we all want to do that.
And, and you know what, Counsel, Counsel, you know what offends me is that you think you're trying to serve. The residents more than the rest of us. And we are fine. No, no, this is the way.
Can we get back to the matter before us, please?
Thank you, Counsel Memart. Okay, so you had this meeting, you, you came up with this great solution. And, um, and we've elected to consider it.
I said I don't have all the answers. The quote I shared with you that it was the most workable plan. That Mike Hale said, if he, look, if he, if he disagrees, he can say that the next time we have a meeting.
I'd love to see that plan, but we can meet tomorrow. Love, love to see it.
Okay, well, I was going to present to the private road working group, but I wasn't invited because the quote you said was. Really?
Yeah, I, this is, this is, this is, this is, this is beyond stupid now. We're, we're. That, it, yes, we.
I moved to adjourn. I moved to adjourn because this, you call me stupid.
I didn't call you stupid. I didn't call you stupid. I said, this is getting stupid. This back and forth bickering is, is not.
Order, point of order. Can we just let Jeff finish a sentence? That's all. Say your sentence, say a second sentence without interruption, please. Let's just speak, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Neil. I asked if I could be on the private road workers group. Someone said there's more private roads in Ward four. And that's why that person was on the committee. That's fine. I waited and the mayor said, wait until this is done and we'll look at your plan. It's not done. Now here we are saying, we want to put in our ordinance, something that makes it harder. To accomplish the goal of getting more roads paved, in my opinion, okay? And then we have these nice little cute words that we say, and if we don't like it. We can just change it easily. We're just tidying up things. We're just, just, whenever someone says, we're just doing something, I always, my radar goes up like, what are we just doing? Okay, and then we can just easily change it. Well, look how hard this change has been. This is now a year and four months. And this change hasn't happened yet. So we're just going to be able to magically undo it if it, if we have another opportunity. I think we should really say, is this going to help us get more roads paved? Yes or no? The answer is no. So why are we making it harder for people? I'm not saying that I have the finished polished plan ready to go, but I have the makings of it. And I'm using other communities that are successful at this as models. And for whatever reason. I'm waiting and waiting and waiting until this part's done. And we're just going to continue, continuing. And not one more paid road is going to be paved. So I am absolutely voting against this. And I don't begrudge the effort. I think it's a nice try. But it's just. Making things harder for people who are already struggling. So there's no trashing here. There's no none of that. I just. Don't know why we're making it harder for people to make, get roads paved. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else like to speak on this motion? Um, Counsel Gross.
So to, to answer some questions about permanent repair, temporary repair. Think of a home. You got a leaky roof. You replace a few shingles. Temporary repair. Replace the entire roof. Permanent repair. So that's what it's like on a road. You know, you, you, you fill the potholes. That's a temporary repair. You grind down, regrade, replace the base coat and the top coat, you grade. That's a permanent repair. It's pretty clear, pretty simple. And, um. You know, people who are in the trades know what that, what a permanent repair is and what a temporary repair is. That's, uh, you know, so that's, that's one point. Um, this does, this. This language is just strictly to state what the law is. It's not to state what the future is. It's not to state that we can't or can or cannot try for a home rule petition. It has, it, it has no bearing really on anything. I mean, it wasn't even in here. It would make no difference on this ordinance. So I, I'm really baffled at why we're having such big arguments over this. Because it's, it's what's in, you can't spend public money on private properties. That's very clear in the financial laws of this state. And so it, it's. It's unfortunate that we have so many private roads. And believe me, I would rather not to have paid my, my betterments than I'm paying for the next ten years to have my road fixed. Um, but it's just, we are stuck with that. Now, can we work out different solutions? Should we be trying to work out different solutions? Absolutely. But in the meantime, we need to be honest also. And I think that that's what this is. This is honest. This isn't giving false hope. Um, and that is our job. We are doing. A horrible service to our constituents when we give false hope. So that's all this is being is, this is just being honest. And that's all I see this as.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on this? This order. Um, Counsel O'Neill.
I'm thinking that this. Going back to what Attorney Egan said, if, if, if we want to make repairs to private roads, we'll have to. Lobby the legislature and try to change the law. Or I just think it makes it that much more difficult. And with what Counsel Gross said. We could leave it out and it would just still be the same. So. Again, I don't see any point in voting yes. Because if that's the Massachusetts general law, then that's the law. We don't need to put it in our ordinance. So if the mass law changes. We're still going to have this in the ordinance, which means we're going to have to go through all these meetings like we've done for what feels like months. To change it to meet the Mass General Law. If the Mass General Law changes, because our law will be more strict than the Massachusetts law. So if we just leave it out, there's no harm, no foul. So I won't be supporting this.
So, um, I'd like to speak on, on this. So I will be supporting this. Um, the, the most work I've done in my eight years as a ward counselor is I've talked to people about. The website that Counsel Memart, Counsel Nolan and I developed our first year in the committee. And it's on the public works website. It talks about the repair of private roads. And we have the list of streets, which ones are private, which ones aren't. We have all of our ordinances. We have all the, the laws in Massachusetts. We have our plowing law back from nineteen forties. We've got, um, a history back from two thousand eleven called the surveyors international. Or, you know, state. And, and it goes through all the case law, leading up to the fact that. What this statement says. And, um. The most important thing that I can do with my constituents. Is to be honest with them about where we are. It's not that I like where we are. I hate where we are. I hate having these conversations. It's not fair, but it's the law. And, and for us to be trying to appease our constituents, which is making them think that we have this endless pool of money. At the state, at, in our, in our infrastructure. When we know that we don't even have half of what we need for our public roads, the roads we all work on. And ride on every single day is a problem. We've got prop two and a half in our, in our city right now. Everything that we try to do, whether it be water, sewer, road repair, everything comes with a cost. And part of our job as counselors is to legislate. And when we legislate, we have to help find the funds. We can't just complain and, and tell everybody that this is really frustrating. And, and there's nothing we can do about it. We want to make change. We want to make things better. So we're all in this together right now. But I just want to be honest with our constituents. And that's how I've handled it. I know Counsel Memart and Counsel Nolan have done the same because we have the most private roads in Ward one. In Ward four, in Ward five. And it's, and it's been a lousy, lousy eight years going over this. So we're trying to make some change in education. And if we can come up with miracle solutions, man, let's, let's get it done. So I'm going to be supporting this and I hope the rest of you join me. Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Nolan.
Counsel O'Hara had his hand up.
Counsel Nolan, go ahead.
I was just calling to the fact that you had your hand up.
Thank, thank you. Um, you know, thank you, Counsel Nolan. Um, I, I.
I I I've heard everyone's comments and and we're talking about and we've continued to talk about and I I apologize to Counselor Gross. He's mentioned 2017. But I I revert back to six N, which is very simplified. The I I what I'm getting out of this Counselor Grow, Counsel Gilman just said it. It's a financial issue. We don't, as a city, we don't have the money to do repairs on private roads. Hence, we are telling the constituents, the taxpayers who pay 100% of what somebody pays on a public road for their residents. We're we're telling them because we don't have money, we cannot do anything on the roads. And we're tightening the the ordinance because the state law doesn't require us to tighten the ordinance to the level that that we have. Our job is not to obviously run the city. We don't tell the mayor. We don't have the the power. I I can't. I've been a city councilor for eight years. I can't call the fire department and tell them how to run their operations or the police department or DPW or any other of the departments. But that's the mayor's job. It's a very tough situation. I've listened to the budget meetings where where proposing Chief Chief Smith proposing a $70,000 position to enforce OSHA regulations. Well, that's $70,000 potentially could be earmarked for private roads. It's a very tough, tough decision to make changes, regionalizing, to try to simplify and reduce costs of the city so that we can bring money to help find the repair these private roads. As Counsel Worthy has said and others, oh, I shouldn't say others. Counsel Worthy said, we're creating this 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 ordinance change to make it more difficult for repairs to be done on private roads. The constituents, again, who pay the full boat. So with that said, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Any further comments, discussion, counselors? On the motion? I'm seeing none. We're ready for roll call vote. Counsel O'Neill.
No.
Counsel Worthy.
No.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
On the yeses have it, six in favor, three opposed. O'Neill, Worthy and O'Hara. Thank you. Next order of business.
Yeah. President, could I ask for a three minute recess?
Is there a second on the request for a recess? Counsel O'Hara, roll call vote. Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Sure.
Counsel Majota.
No, I'm having too much fun.
You always have a good personality, Counsel Majota. Counsel Memard.
No, I don't want to wake up the rest of the household getting out of here.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The yeses have it, seven in favor, two are comedians. So let's be back in three minutes. Let's mute our phones and stop our videos and let's get back in three minutes. Thank you. Counselors, if you're back, would you would you put your videos on? So I know we are we're back from our break. We've got a big Celtic scheme that some of us would love to get to at some point tonight.
Does anybody know what the score is?
I don't want to know. Don't tell me. It's it's a do or die game, and I'm gonna be depressed if it's not good news.
You gotta come back.
Okay, I think I see everyone. Counsel Gross, Grow and Majota, are you back? Okay, I see everyone. Everyone is back. Terrific. Okay, thank you. And next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public Karen, 2023-17, amend Gloucester Court of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Section 21-82, Temporary Repair.
Look like to open the public hearing and ask if anybody would like to speak in favor or in opposition. We have Barnaby. Barnaby, would you state your name in your address and you have up to three minutes to talk to us about this matter?
Hi, Barnaby Prendergast, 61 Farnell Street. I just it's a sort of general as well as the specifics on this particular motion, but I really, I just want to say thank you to you all for working so hard on this. I know it has been an incredibly difficult process. But you think you I think you've done a really good job of laying out the legal structure as well as the financial structures, which are making it so difficult to do things like temporary repairs, permanent repairs, resurfacing. And I I am in favor of all of the amendments that you've made, not because they make a huge practical difference to how the streets are gonna change, but you've done a very good job, I feel, of helping explain to people who particularly people who live on private streets, why they themselves are responsible for their private property. And hopefully, some of them will be able to recognize the limitations to what the city can do and they will go out and buy a bag of patch and fill a pothole occasionally and will have fewer broken ball joints and so on. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Barnaby. Anyone else like to speak in favor or in opposition? We still have 17 attendees on the call. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, are there any correspondences or communications?
There are none.
Counselors, any questions to ask of our General Counsel? Counsel Worthy.
Can we put this legislation back up on the screen as well, just like the other two? Please.
Sure. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, that would be great. Okay. Oh, here, I'm making my funny noises again. Can you bring it down a little bit? Little bit more. Great, thank you.
I believe you cut the bottom half off of that. We need to go up a little bit more so we can add places of interest.
Can we stretch this out, Joanne, so we can see the whole thing?
Now we can see it.
We can see it.
All right, awesome.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you. Okay, so counselors on on this, basically, it's very brief. It was adding section D, which just says temporary repair to private roads that are connector streets between two public roads or roads leading to a public area or place of interest may by may be prioritized for temporary repairs. We would we ended up withdrawing the second part of this early on in one of our ONA meetings, which made sense to everybody. We had a good conversation. And then we wanted to add definitions, and this was at our last ONA meeting where we wanted to define under the definition section of this ordinance, what places of interest in public areas are. And a place of interest is a community recreational venue facility or a multi-use commercial or recreational location in a public area to include venues such as playgrounds, schools, public landings, hiking trails or other similar areas open to the public. And that basically discusses what we're going to try to prioritize under this ordinance. And that's it. So we've got that in front of us. So counselors, any 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 questions now that you can visualize this? I'm gonna keep scrolling up and down so I can see you all. Let's see, I think I see Counsel Worthy and then Counsel O'Neill.
Just a couple of questions. I I think this is an improvement from what we've had. Sorry, I just asked a question. Has Mike Hale, our DBW director, been consulted with this? Has he advised on this in any way?
Suzanne, you you've talked to him ongoing on this. Do you want to answer that question?
You're muted.
Yes, I I can respond to that. So Mike has reviewed this and he has worked with the administration on this and that is part of, but that I think is one of the reasons why it is in the sort of the position it is in now. If that makes sense, so that he he was in support of withdrawing subsection E.
Okay.
And I think I saw Counsel O'Neill. Your hand was raised.
Yes, thank you. What would be a multi-use commercial location?
I'm not sure if we could actually like think of one, but it would be some type of a business that had both a commercial location and maybe recreational location or retail. Just just something that had all of those components. And 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 basically what we're simulating is that if you have a facility like that and there's a private road leading to it, that that road would have more use because of the nature of all the people in the community going to that venue.
No, I understand what it's saying, but what is a multi-use commercial location? I know what a recreational location is, but a multi-use commercial, I don't have any idea what that would be. Can you?
Um. Attorney Egan, do you have any thoughts because on on how I can be more specific to what multi-use is based on what I just said?
So I I think that you you gave a good explanation so that it would be on an area that has many retail stops and may shops and maybe also a place of business, a a commercial business that employed a number of people in a different way other than retail, plus retail, plus there could be some but there could be some other type of uses that go on to that property that is it's sort of it's the definition is to define something that is a draws a lot of visitors to it. And that private road that has a lot of use. And so multiuses, I think, is to a certain extent referring to our uses under the zoning ordinance. It has sort of all these different uses that are defined. So one location with many uses.
So.
Counsel O'Neill, ahead.
Does it make sense that a multi-use commercial location would be on a private road? Does it make sense?
Could be.
Can you give me an example?
Bass Rock Beach Club or golf club.
That's a private road. That's right.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counselors? Let me hold on. Okay, seeing none, I already asked if there was any correspondence and you said no, correct? Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay, any so no further questions. So I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Counsel Nolan.
On a motion by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, zero opposed. O'Hara to recommend the City Council amend GCO Chapter 21, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places. Article four, Repair of Private Ways, Section 21-82, Temporary Repair by adding new subsections D in E as follows. Add in D, Temporary Repair to Private Roads that are a connector street between two public roads or roads leading to a public area or place of interest may be prioritized for temporary repairs. Withdrawing E, if making temporary repairs to private road, the city shall notify the abutters that the road is unsafe due to the condition of the road. The abutters shall with one within one year of the receiving notice with a plan to make permanent improvements to the road, whether by private road repairs or through a betterment process. If the plan is submitted, the city will continue to make temporary repairs for one calendar year, and that was withdrawn. Add in definitions to Chapter 21, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article four, Section 21-8B, Definitions. Place of interest as a community recreational venue facility or a multi-use commercial or recreational location. Public area to include venues such as playgrounds, schools, public landings, hiking trails and other similar areas open to the public. And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counselor Nolan and seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Counselors, can we take this down now so we can discuss this and see everybody? Joanne, if you would do that, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, so Counsel Nolan, is there a narrative on this as the ONA Chair?
Again, this is something that was brought up by the working group. It may help achieve some prioritization to roads that may have more importance to the public. It it doesn't mean it's the only roads that are gonna have a a priority to a list. It just helps set a guideline of some of the ones that may be more important because of the vast public use. As you know, the more the public uses a private road, the more wear and tear, and that may involve giving them a top priority to try to help them out. Not saying that every road isn't important, because as you said, this is this is eight years of a lot of work and trying to find what we can and can't do. But basically, this is just a a little bit that came out of the private road working group, trying to find a way of setting some more goals. It doesn't necessarily mean things will happen or not happen, but it's just trying to make a list of of top priorities or goals that we can look into achieving.
And as the co-author of this, I would just like to add before we open up for further discussion is so when we look at the layout of many of our private roads, there seems to be one that just seems even more difficult for us to think that the abutters would be responsible for paying for for in terms of a better and 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 in in that. So those are the roads that that are can are discussed here because if you have, if if you take a look at, let's say, Brightside and Beach, which are the most horrific roads in Ward one that need private temporary, at least temporary road repair, right? We all know that. In Ward five, Counselor Nolan, you have Shore Road, which is connect, do you want to, you know, just describe that between the two crossroads? What, explain that a little bit to us?
Well, Shore Road is a joint road between public and private, and it does connect through major public roads, but it's used by everybody. However, it's not in that bad a shape. If I had to pick the worst roads in Ward five, I would start with New Way Lane in La Roselle. In which New Way Lane does have, have public parking at the end for hiking trails.
And just to add, in the, in Ward four, you know, some of the roads that are just, you know, highly, highly traveled by lots of people that fall into these categories, obviously is Apple Street. Because Apple Street, half of Apple Street is our playgrounds and fields, and then the end of Apple Street is Corliss Landing. And, and there are 20 parcel owners on that street. And it, it just seems it, for all the other people that use that road over and over and over again, it just seems like that would need to be an emphasis for, for repair, temporary repairs of private roads. And so that's what this whole premise is about this particular order. And, and we also took the recommendation of O and A on several occasions and created more clear definitions of place of interest in public area, and that was at the advice of the, the council. So I hope you, you join me in supporting this. Any, anyone else like to speak on this? Counsel Gross, the floor is yours.
So in the last couple of years, the mayor has put, I mean, in last year's budget and this year's budget, increased from $60,000 to $300,000 for road repair. Of course, that's not designated strictly to private roads, it's to all roads. And I think that that's a place that we can, particularly after free cash is designated as to lobby to the administration for more, to, to expand that, that particular fund and to actually utilize this section of the ordinance to prioritize those roads that are thoroughfares and are used by people who are not necessarily just living on it. My road is a dead end and and I know it was, they, they refused to repair any of the potholes until we entered into the betterment and gave our deposit. They weren't going to fix any of that. It was very frustrating. So I, I understand how difficult this can be, and I think that we do owe it to the people who lives on these roads that are being used by the, you know, largely by the general public and not just the people who live on those. And I think this is a good move to try to get those roads, actually to get some temporary, significant temporary repair. And I don't mean just go put some coal patch in, you know, just actually really fix the potholes. So hopefully we can continue to lobby to increase that road repair fund to, to take care of the, these situations.
Thank you, Counselor. Who else would like to speak? Counsel Grow, your hand is raised.
I just want to, I really want to thank the private road repair group for the work that they did. The conversations that we've been having these last couple of months, it's just shown how thorny this whole issue is. And I think that, you know, no group would have a more vested interest in coming up with a conclusion that benefited them than that, or that group of people, because a lot of them lived on private roads. But for them to come to the conclusion that they're, where we are is, is basically those conclusions and that, you know, like Tony said, we're, there, there's, there's, there's ways that we can, we can begin to address some of the issues that, that have been bothering people. But I think that by and large, the level of clarity, and I, and I want to thank Barnaby for his comments about where we are now is, is really important because it, it is incredibly frustrating, and it's incredibly frustrating to try to have to explain this to people over and over again, that, you know, we wish it were different, it isn't. This is what we have to deal with. And by, by really giving the, the, the administration a sense of our priorities as a council by putting this into the ordinances, I think we're, we're giving them permission to begin to make some changes in areas that are going to be most beneficial for the most people, you know, like Tony's right, we live, some of us who live on dead end streets, we're not going to see much love on that front. But for people who live on main thoroughfares who have to watch the roads around them, you know, be degraded by a constant passage of cars, you know, it is a, it is a, it is a small bit of balm to, to the problem. And, you know, I appreciate all, all the discussion that we've had. And I think every one of us is working really hard trying to find a solution. And you know, it's, we're not necessarily going to find the right, the same solution, but we're going to get there at some point incrementally, and I think this is what we've done.
Thank you, Counselor. Who else would like to speak on the motion? I don't see anyone. Oh, oh, hold on.
Is, is.
Jamie. I, I have nine spots tonight and, and I'm, and I'm sorry.
I just want to, want to, want you to.
I'm glad you're probably excited.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
So with this said, with this said, I believe that this is similar to my last comment, that this is just clouding, making, making, making it more difficult. You know, the bottom line is we don't have the funding. And I'm talking, I'm going to talk about the elephant in the room. We have to change the way we're operating the city of Gloucester. The people need to be taken care of. As Mr. Jim Distino said at the North Shore Art Center, Art Association a number of years ago, I think Counselor Memhard was at least one counselor who was there with me on that, that evening. We have some of the richest employment contracts in the state of Massachusetts. Now that's a goal we probably don't need to achieve. Our, our constituents, the people who vote all nine of us into office, need to, need to, as Counselor Grow just said, they need a little love. They need to have something given back to them. They're, they're, they're crying, obviously, they're talking at oral communications, they're, they're ringing the phones off the hook to every one of the ward counselors and the at-large counselors. We have to change the way we do business in the city of Gloucester. We can look at Beverly, Danvers, Salem, Lynn. I, I won't get into the particulars, but everyone knows what I'm talking about. We have to change the way we're doing business because we are bleeding the, the constituents, the taxpayers of Gloucester dry. When, when a constituent calls me and is crying that they can't pay their water bill, that they can't pay the simple necessity of life, their water bill. That's sad. We have to change the way we're doing business. It's all about the almighty buck, and that's why we're, I, I consider this a total waste of our time. Extending the meetings into the wee hours of the night, just creating more, more verbiage to make it more difficult. Because again, six N is very simple, very limited, and it, they wrote it for a reason, because they leave it up to the cities or towns to do what they want. And, and again, I can't support this. Hopefully, this is going to get, obviously, we'll get back to the mayor. We have to change the way we operate in the city of Gloucester so we can create some funding to do repairs. And repairs can be as wide as running a 12-foot paving box down the street with a 10-foot roll, a 10-ton roller behind it and, and truckloads full of asphalt. That is a temporary repair. We aren't grinding, we aren't milling, we're just putting two inches of cover. And guess what? The, 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 the taxpayers of that private road will be thrilled. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else like to discuss this? I'm going to just swing back again, make sure I've got everybody. Counsel O'Neill.
Yeah, I would like to agree with Counsel O'Hara. Case in point, Eastern Ave. I drive Eastern Avenue two, three, four, six, eight times a day.
That's a public road though, Counselor.
I know. Speaking of the way the city does business, okay?
Okay.
No one pothole on that road. But yet they grind, they grinded it or they milled it, whatever you call it, two days now, and then they're going to pave it. That's money that could have been spent elsewhere. And I won't get into a bunch of other things. I'll wait for comments at the end of the night, but we do need to change the way we're doing business, the way we're spending money, like water. It's crazy. Crazy.
So I see no other parts of the discussion, so I would just like to add one thing to this conversation. Councilors, we legislate. That's what we do. We legislate. And, and a big part of legislating is we oversee the budget and we approve the budget. And we have to always make sure when we make promises to our constituents that we can fund the budget. And when we make promises and we commiserate with our constituents without finding those funding sources, we become part of the problems. We are the city. And I just want to make sure that we know that we have to legislate this, all these things that we're feeling. So I hope that, that this is just a, a springboard to the things that we all feel passionate about. You know, we need to get more people to come to our public hearing on the budget. We need to, to start talking to people earlier on prioritizing what they want to see in the budget. Similar to what Counsel Memhard and I did early on this year to try to get some, and, and I know Counsel O'Neill, I think you did as well, but we are trying to get input from our constituents on what the budget priority should be. These are all things that are really important to us. So I ask that we keep this passion that we're feeling and, and we just can't complain about things. We have to come up with solutions because we are a major part of the government here, every one of us. And it doesn't help if we're all saying that it's someone else's problem. It's our issue as legislators to come up with the funding. So that's all I have to say, and I think we're, we're ready to, to call the roll. Okay. Got my pen? Got the list? Counsel O'Neill?
No.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memmar?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
No.
On the yeses have it, seven in favor, two opposed, O'Neill and O'Hara. Thank you, councilors. Thank you Suzanne for staying here all night, and also Jill for doing the same. So it's very much appreciated. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
It's the council vote, Special City Council Meeting Minutes of May 2nd, 2023, regarding City Council Number 2023 021. Gilman, City Council Rules of Procedure 2022, Rule Number Two, Order of Business. And this is to ratify action taken at the May 2nd, 2023 City Council Meeting.
Councilors, this is a simple one. We, we got off, we, we got on to an amendment, I think it was Counsel Gross's, and then we went back to the, the main motion. And we thought that somebody had made the motion and had seconded it. And in looking at the tapes and listening to it over and over again, our clerk of committee noted that we had not, and I will also give credit to our city clerk who didn't think that we had made the motion and seconded. So we're just doing this as a cosmetic issue because we all thought that we had. So at this point, I'd like to ask if someone would like to officially move this motion. And so it says right now in the minutes from May 2nd, it says in a motion by counsel, counselor, it says XX, seconded by Counsel XX. So would someone like to move that motion with?
Seconded.
Okay, Counsel Nolan and Counsel Grow seconded. Discussion councilors. Seeing none, roll call, vote. Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Womar?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Okay, so it's an update from Counsel Gilman on the status of City Council hybrid meetings in Cairo's auditorium based on fire cleanup status.
And I probably am not even going to talk about this right now because we didn't approve this on the unanimous consent agenda, but you will see that we have a document that we did receive from Ryan, and the public can see that document as well. And we'd like you to just note that it looks like we're our move back to Cairo's as true hybrid is probably not going to be until the first week in September, rather than the beginning of July, as we had hoped because of the extensive work that has to be done with the scaffolding and the cleanup of the ceiling of our beautiful Cairo's auditorium. So this is just Ryan's detail. People can read about it in the packet under the unanimous consent agenda, under the City Council website. And we will need to be discussing this at a later date, but I just wanted, this was hot off the process of the late, late in the afternoon, middle of the afternoon on Friday. That's why I put it on the unanimous consent agenda, but I'd had placeholder to discuss this if we didn't get it. So that's it. Any questions on this right now? Because I think it's just, it's really for an FYI only, and I'd just like you to digest it and think about if you want to have a bigger discussion about this at an upcoming meeting. Make sense? Okay, great. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is the 400th statement from Counsel O'Neill.
Counsel O'Neill, you did a fine job in the timing tonight. Thank you. And now you get the honor of reading this word, which has Indian tribe names that I have to learn how to pronounce better. But I'd love to have you make the statement if you would.
Thank you. 2023 marks 400 years since the English Dorchester Company landed on our shores. Gloucester sits on the ancestral homeland of the Pawtucket people and their neighbors, the Massachusetts, Nipmuck, Pennecook, and Wampanoag tribes. Please enjoy the year-long and multiple events throughout 2023, most of which will be free or low cost. Visit GloucesterMA400.org for a list of upcoming events. Like and share the Gloucester 400 Facebook page. To receive major events, notifications by mail, send a request to info@gloucesterma400.org.
Thank you, Counselor O'Neill. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
It's Council's request to the mayor.
Okay, so we're going to do this in order of roll call. So Counsel O'Neill?
Thank you. My third request to the mayor is to give a timeline as to when, or please give a timeline as to when Perkins Street and Green Street will be paved as promised. That's my third request. Third request is also to repair and/or replace the sidewalk on Mason Street so that the elderly people from Central Grammar Apartments, walking to Shaws with their walkers, canes, and wheelchairs don't fall and break a hip and sue the city. That's also the third request. Another third request was please have the Gloucester 400 Club make a full presentation to the council regarding monies spent, including money spent of the $100,000, including line item. including, money spent of the $100,000, including line item details. And that's it. Thank you.
Um, next up is Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. I want to apologize for having to leave the meeting and appreciate everyone's understanding. My son and daughter are both at our family school, and they performed a remarkable concert. The, the program is really thriving and I appreciate everyone understanding that I wanted to be there. And as much as I love you guys, that's a little bit, that's important. Thank you. As I listened to the commentary about whether or not we should be expressing our concerns and challenges and complaints with the city and emphasizing with residents and citizens who, who are saying the same sorts of things. I just want to draw attention to one thing, and it's actually something we should celebrate. A few years ago, Counsel O'Hara was expressing to me his concern and other residents' concerns about the tremendous amount of beach traffic that was happening. And I challenged him. I challenged him, said, put a task force together, do something about this. And he put together a task force on beach parking and traffic. He asked me to serve on it because I had worked for Parks and Recreation for five summers. We met with Counsel Nolan and Counsel Memhard due to Winger Sheek Beach and Stagefort and Good Harbor respectfully. And it was a specific recommendation of volunteer Rick Dousit and Fred Geisel, God rest his soul, to create the beach reservation system. They nominated me to present the recommendation to the council administration. And that is a significant positive difference that Counsel O'Hara made. I want to commend Mayor Verger for getting effort over the finish line. But let's not forget that Counsel O'Hara raised a complaint. He put something together, solved it, and I think we all appreciate the tremendous benefit that that action took. So I just want to make sure he knows that I appreciate that too. I want to remind people that Monday morning is Memorial Day events starting at nine o'clock. My son is very privileged and appreciative to be able to play taps and pay tribute to people who gave the ultimate sacrifice, along with Jim Delpia, so 9:00 AM Gloucester High School. I hope to see you all there. That's it.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Gross?
I don't have any requests, but just Thursday or Friday after our last meeting, the Career Vocational Technical School had their awards night, their first awards night. And hopefully, one of many, it was very, it was great to see those kids celebrated. That school, that, that part of Gloucester High School is thriving. It really needed, it's gotten the shots in the arm that it needed to get. And it's, it's such a positive thing for the kids who are going into trades because not everybody's destined to go to college and we can't rate our school by college because we are, you know, college admissions because we are a comprehensive high school. And we place many of our, our future citizens, future, you know, citizens in path, career paths that are going to allow them to afford to live here. That's really important. I, I, so that's, that was a great, great thing to attend. Also, today I went down to the ribbon cutting on the solar panels at the, the Vocates, Voc School also. That was, that was great because that's going to be a long, long term educational experience for much of that, the whole, the engineering parts, the, the electrical, mechanical, the carpentry, they all have, they've all had their hands in that. And they're, and it's going to be a long-term where they measure, you know, different angles to the sun and they get to keep the data for years going forward. It's, that was, that was kind of exciting to see that ribbon cutting today. And also, the first Friday in June, I just want everybody to be aware, is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And there will be a, a gathering at City Hall at 11 o'clock because we're all aware of, of the tragedy that is befalling, you know, us right now as far as the amount of gun violence that's creating havoc all around the nation. So that's it.
Thank you, Tony. Next is Counsel Grow.
Uh, Tony, actually, can I ask Tony to repeat the date on that, please?
June 2nd, 11:00 PM at City Hall. 11:00 AM, 11:00 AM.
That would be another long meeting, Tony.
Um, I just want to point this out because the mayor's office sent this press release out. There's a lot of people who are very interested and hanging on this. City of Gloucester is going to be hosting a presentation on Good Harbor Beach Creek Investigation tomorrow night, May 24th at 6:00 PM on Zoom. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but they are going to have their consultants Woodward and Curran and city staff available. The presenters are going to be Jill Cahill, Cindy Junker with Public Health Nurse, the City of Gloucester, Bree Gray, Health Inspector of City of Gloucester, Michael Hale, Public Works Director, and Janelle Bond from Woodward and Curran. After the presentation, several expert panelists will answer audience questions related to Good Harbor Beach Creek. It is listed on the city's website. It is going to be a Zoom meeting. So this has obviously been a, an issue of, of a lot of concern to those of us who love our beach, and this is hopefully going to be an opportunity to get some answers. At least that's what I hope it will be, and please tune in.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up is Counsel Majota.
Um, just one request to the mayor is more information on the crosswalk signal for the boulevard right by the bridge. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Memhard?
Not to the mayor directly at this time, but I'd just like to thank Counsel President Gilman for organizing. Adrienne Nunes for her presentation this afternoon. That was very helpful. I'd, I'd looked through the PowerPoint previously. I wasn't sure she was going to give us anything new of substance, but in fact, I found her, her comments were, were very relevant and helpful to our debate even here tonight. Secondly, a, a lot of my constituents and your constituents are in, up in arms complaining about road construction projects on Eastern Avenue and East Main Street and other locations, Mount Pleasant Avenue. And I would just like to thank the administration and, and, and the DPW. Aside from timing challenges, and I suspect that our budget has a lot to do with why they are being done now. But the end result will be something that we'll all enjoy for a long time, a good investment in our infrastructure.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up is Counsel Nolan.
I only have 12 things tonight, so it shouldn't be that bad. First, it's that time of the year, and I want to give thanks to Ringo Tar and all his, his volunteers. The flags will be going up on the boulevard as usual. Pauline Bresnahan for making sure that they're sold and available. It's always a great addition to the summer, and I really enjoy it, and Ringo does a ton for the community. I'd like to add a little bit to Tony Gross's vocational program. I'd like to thank Brunt Work Boots. They contributed to all new work boots for all the vocational program, to all the students, and that was a, a big, big thing for them. And also to the Department of Public Works. We're coming up on Labor Day, on, sorry, Memorial Day weekend. The beaches are getting opened, the parking lots are being opened, the new cameras are being installed. Lot of work to be done. They're doing a great job with it. And I would say lastly, just to remind people that you can get your beach stickers in person at the Soy Free Library in the children's wing down on the backside by the fire department. Bring your registration checks only, and they'll walk you through the process. Other than that, thank you all.
Ryan did a great, great tutorial about that online. It's on Facebook.
Thank you, Counsel Nolan. Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you, thank you. I want to thank Patty Emerald for cleaning and maintaining Private Joseph S. Meadows Memorial. I'll be straight up, we should be, as a city, we should be absolutely ashamed of ourselves that we aren't maintaining that, that sacred ground. Joseph was killed at age 19, 19 years old, killed in action. He was the youngest, youngest soldier killed from Gloucester in World War I. He entered the service at age 16. To think that we can't even maintain, pick up the trash, mow the lawn around it, keep the flag so it's presentable. Again, I thank Patty Emerald for being so, so determined to make sure that Joseph is never forgotten. I also want to reiterate the need for body cameras for our police officers and take it a step forward further for our firefighters and particularly the paramedics. A recent event in Cranston, Rhode Island, a, a, the Cranston Police were called for a wellness check of a man in a, in a car, in a public parking lot during the daytime. Someone had reported, they thought the man was deceased. He wasn't. He was actually a city councillor of Cranston. He had used a crack pipe. And the, the city councillor said to the police officer, do you know who I am? And the police officer had to tell him, you're, you're being recorded on a body camera. He is no longer a city councillor. But that shows the importance of having body cameras. It protects the police officers. It protects the citizens of, of, in our case, the city of Gloucester. So I, I hope the mayor can, can move that forward. I spoke to a police officer in Mobile, Alabama. They've had the, they've had body cameras for 12 years, 12 years. This, this police officer told me he would never go out on duty without a body camera. And to just tell the reason why, he says, some people don't want body cameras. Said the only, the only police officers who fight the body cameras are the dirty police officers. This is Memorial Day weekend. I want to thank the men and women who serve our country. They serve it 365 days a year, 24/7, around the world. They protect the freedom that, that we enjoy. And we are to take a moment and, and think about the, the men and women who have been lost protecting our freedom. Also, in Memorial Day, there'll be a lot of people enjoying themselves. As, as has been said, it's, there's a dry, dry period out there. Fires, fires can happen. There are a lot of cookouts. People are having cookouts, cook-offs, very popular today. Just be careful, be careful of the fires. Please keep the noise to a minimum. But have an enjoyable and, and peaceful Memorial Day weekend. And don't forget the men and women who have given their lives to protect our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. In my final words, of what I wanted to just recognize are the people at City Hall because what they've had to go through the last three weeks or two and a half weeks since the fire has been pretty extraordinary. A lot of, a lot of movement, a lot of noise, a lot of smells that are uncomfortable, a lot of job sharing and in skeleton crews. And I was really proud yesterday. Our city clerk's office was fully staffed yesterday. And, and that was really important because, you know, they are the heart and soul of all the people that walk in there to do business. And so if you have an opportunity to say thanks to the city clerk's office and all the staff at City Hall, it's, it's been a pretty challenging time for all of them. So an act of kindness or a thanks is really appreciated. And for that, Joanne Sinos, thank you. We appreciate you. And send back the message to the team that supports us that, that they're top-notch, and we really appreciate it. That's all I have to say. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm going to accept everybody's second. So roll call vote, Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman? Yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Worthley.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Joanne.
Good night.
Good night.